Good afternoon. We're reconvening the 2019 annual town meeting for the town of Duxbury. This morning, we completed business under the special town meeting and through Article Six of the annual town meeting. And so, we will pick up where we left off, which is at Article Number Seven. I remind people that Fire Chief has asked that we keep the exits clear and be aware of the various exits in the building. By way of background, Article Seven is going to be divided into two motions. The article will be handled in the same way as the previous article, which was Number Six. The Finance Committee Chair will move each of these two motions, and we will discuss each of these motions separately. Both of these two motions, when they are voted on, will become final votes. There will not be a summary motion to deal with those two things, those two motions. So, Mrs. Sullivan, may we have a motion under Article Seven? Motion Number One.
Small Equipment and Minor Services. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $90,071 as the Small Equipment and Minor Services Budget for the purposes and in the amounts specified below. And to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of $77,371, and to transfer the sum of $12,700 from the Waterways Improvement Fund to be expended under the direction of the Town Manager.
Second.
Okay. Public Safety. Police Department, Line One. DJI Matrix 200. It's a drone. And the price tag is $6,775. Number Two. A thermal camera for this drone that we just discussed is $7,999. Six. Streamlight Portable Scene Lights. $6,324. Line Four. Pre-engineered Steel Mezzanine. $11,163. Fire Department. Five. Airbag Lifting System. $9,500. Harbor Master. Number Six. Submeter GPS. $4,200. Seven. Radar Depth Sounder Unit. $8,500. Public Safety is total at Library and Recreation Library. Twenty-eight standard guest chairs. Line Ten. $6,0410. Line Eleven. Three Hydro Stations, formerly known as Bubblers. $6,410. Recreation. Number Twelve. Remove and Replace Fence Fabric at the Tarkin Courts. $10,500. North Hill Golf Course. Line Thirteen. Remove and Replace Split Rail Fence at the Main Entrance. $10,700. And that's it.
Mrs. Sullivan, by way of clarification, could you repeat Line Number Eleven?
Three Hydro Stations, formerly known as Water Bubblers. $8,000.
$8,000. Very good. Motion has been made and seconded. I heard no holds, but I'll ask if there's anybody with a question or concern before we move to a vote. Seeing no questions or concerns, I will ask for a vote under Article Seven. Motion Number One. When the green light comes on, vote one for yes, two for no. Voting is open. Voting is closed, and the motion carries 143 to 26. Mrs. Sullivan, Motion Number Two.
Small Equipment and Minor Services. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $20,000 as the Small Equipment and Minor Services Budget for the purposes and in the amounts specified below. And to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be expended under the direction of the School Committee.
Second.
Duxbury Schools. Line Eight. A Floor Scrubber. $10,000. Line Nine. New Classroom Furniture. Alden School. $10,000. Finance Committee voted eight-zero to recommend.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. I heard no holds. Are there any questions or discussions under this motion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote at this point. Voting is open. One for yes, two for Voting's closed, and the motion carries 167 to 22. Article Number Eight.
Union Contracts. There are none. I move to indefinitely postpone this article.
Second. A call for a vote at this point in time. It's one for yes, two for no. Voting is Voting is closed, and the motion carries 165 to eight. Article Nine, Mrs. Sullivan.
Electronic Balloting. I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $35,000 to fund the cost of operating electronic balloting at town meetings.
Any questions, concerns, or discussion under Article Number Nine? If you're happy holding clickers and voting that way, press one. If you'd like to go back to hand votes, please press two. Voting is open. Voting is closed, and the motion carries 188 to 13. I guess people like clickers. Article Number Ten, Mrs. Sullivan, the Duxbury Beach Lease.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $800,000 to be expended under the direction of the Town Manager for the purpose of leasing Duxbury Beach, being that portion of land in the towns of Duxbury and Plymouth owned by the Duxbury Beach Reservation, Inc., south of a line running approximately east to west along the northerly edge of the northerly parking area, at the east end of the Powder Point Bridge, subject to an area of land excluded at High Pines used by the Duxbury Beach Reservation, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute a lease in the name and on behalf of the town of Duxbury for the period beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020. On such terms and conditions, the Board of Selectmen deems in the best interests of the town.
Second.
Finance Committee voted seven-one to recommend.
Any questions? Mrs. McNabb.
Oderator, this is an increase from last year. I'm hoping that somebody can speak to the increase in the amount and why.
I'm sure we can get you an answer. And you are?
My name is Chris Lutazi, and I'm the Executive Director of Duxbury Beach Reservation.
And how do you say your last name? I apologize.
Lutazi.
Lutazi? Ms. Lutazi is not a resident or voter in the town of Duxbury, is executive, but is Executive Director of the Duxbury Beach Association. At this time, I ask for permission to allow Ms. Lutazi to speak and address the town meeting. May I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please press one. All those opposed, press two. This is a very decisive group we have here this afternoon. Motion carries 190 to 11. This seems to be a very decisive group, and a group that is quick to vote. We've been allowing 15 seconds to vote, and I think we'll cut that down to 10. We'll get home that much sooner for dinner. Okay, thank you very much. I don't know who's going to speak first, with Ms. Carney or Ms. Lutazi. Will speak first.
I'm just going to say, for those of you who don't know, Chris, she has now finishing up her second year as our Executive Director, and she will address this question, but we're both here to answer any questions.
Thank you for your question. The reason why the lease increase is occurring is basically because there's been an increase in expenses on the beach and have been for years.
Okay. Next question, then, is the revenue that is brought in from the beach stickers, resident versus non-resident? The amounts for both of those, please.
Well...
Certainly. You said the breakdown of the revenue? Oh, the revenue between residents and non-residents? Is that your question?
Right. So, we need beach stickers and over sand and parking lots. So, that must...I'm wondering what the...how much money we make on the residents and how much money we get for the...
If I could...that's a question that I think Mr. Adams can answer. It's...what Mrs. McNabb has asked about are the sticker fees that people pay. That is something that is collected by the town of Duxbury, not by the beach reservation. So...
Well, it kind of goes hand in hand, where we're trying to figure out if...
Actually, I'm sorry. I don't mean to disagree that that's a useful number. I just meant to say that we need John Adams to answer that, that the beach reservation people wouldn't have that.
Right now, 2018 revenues for the beach permits was $1.8 million, 72,130. That was...basically, your question?
And do you have it separated as to how much the in-town residents pay versus the out-of-town residents?
I believe it's located in your annual report under the Treasurer's section. I can grab you the page. One?
123.
Just checking. Yep, page 123 of the annual report.
Okay. I'm looking for the...so, out of the $1.8 million...
Okay. So, in 2018, non-resident over sand was $1,9,835. Resident over sand was $452,140. The senior residential was $81,900. Then, we had resident parking lots, $148,300. Senior resident, $76,800.
Could I...if you could just finish that thought, and then we have somebody else who's been patiently waiting for a question.
Go ahead. If somebody...I'm just trying to justify. So, it sounds like the revenue is there. The one...we're making $1.8 million on beach stickers, correct? Is that the number that I heard?
No, it's gross revenue.
He said, yes, that...
Yes.
He's not at a microphone, but Mr. Adams said, yes, that is the gross revenue.
Okay. I'll defer to someone else.
Please, if you...
What is the increase from last year? I heard there's an increase.
The increase in the lease is...
Yes. What is the increase in the lease from year over year?
$50,000.
And you said there are added expenses. What are the added expenses?
There's increased expenses. So, for example, the reservation pays for the Endangered Species Program. That allows the town to sell stickers for folks to recreate. The increase in just the endangered species cost alone was 36 percent. So, $435,000 of the lease amount goes back to pay for the Endangered Species Program. So, it's over 50 percent of our costs are just to pay for the Endangered Species Program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Please, gentleman in the upper left-hand corner.
Puritan Road. With the revenue generated at 1.8 and the lease at $800,000, where does the million dollars go that's generated?
Mr. Adams.
John Adams, Finance Director. The beach operations is...we approximately spend about $120,000 in beach operations. And expenses, $54,000. And police administrative costs, about $41,000. We're also not including that. We also have other public safety administrative costs, and we also have indirect costs from benefits paid to employees. There's something I'm missing, but that's most of the costs of the beach as we know it.
Thank you. So, some of those resources are going to expenses not necessarily associated with the beach. Is that correct?
This has been an interesting conversation that we've had for as long as I've been involved in it. There are many costs that are associated with having a public beach or a beach open to the public, whether it be a drive-on beach or residents or whatever. There's the cost of the bridge, the repairing of the bridge that the town bears. There's the fact that somebody gets hurt out there, then we have to send emergency vehicles or someone to help them. There's the costs that your Harbor Master was discussing earlier today that can vary. I think that people are operating under the mistaken idea that this is a pot of gold that feeds many other areas. There's a lot of money that goes into the reservation, opening the beach and leasing it, and us as well participating in that. But, I mean, it's the identity of the town, isn't it? So, we all work together to make it happen so that Duxbury can continue to be what it is today, and people get to enjoy the beach. And every day, it costs us money to keep that show on the road, and, you know, we're happy to do it, but it's not easy.
Thank you. Mrs. McNabb.
One final question on this. I recall last year, in terms of the lease...let's phrase it this way. In terms of the lease, are we the exclusive users, the town residents and the permit holders that the town sells? Are we the exclusive users of the beach?
Well, under the mission for the reservation, the beach is open to all, hence the reason why we have non-resident and resident stickers that are sold by the town. So, I'm not really sure. Are you the exclusive...
Well, let me...maybe if I just say what I'm thinking. So, last year, I became aware that there were other entities that were renting the beach for functions under tents and so forth, not even affiliated with the town.
Understood.
So, as the leaseholders, are we...do we have exclusive use of the lease, or do you then sublet it out to other towns to have functions?
Understand your question. The reservation owns over four and a half miles of the beach. The lease that we're speaking about here runs from the northern end of the resident parking lot southward. So, those events where there's tents, et cetera, those are held in the north of the resident lot, and that's not part of the town lease. That's the reservation's property, and we don't lease that out. That's where Blakeman's is, restaurant. People pay to park there. It's not part of this lease that we're referring to.
So, there is an available part of the beach that isn't covered by this lease that does get rented out for other uses, other events. And those events do...the people do travel over the bridge, even though they aren't town residents and aren't taxpayers, and they aren't coming across the bridge to park in the parking lot or drive onto the beach. They're there for another event that I'm assuming that you receive money for outside of this lease.
Yes. There's two accesses to our property. One's north from the Marshfield area, and the second is the bridge. I understand that the bridge is in, like, Gurnett Road is a right-of-way, a town right-of-way. So, it's a public right-of-way. So, yes, I would manage to guess that some people do come that way. When they do, though, I know that it's been practiced in the past to tell those folks if they're coming in, and they don't have a sticker, that they need to come in through the other end. And that was handled formally by the Harbor Master that managed that area.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Seeing there are no questions, I'm going to call for a vote on Article Number Ten, which is the Duxbury Lease. When the light turns green, one for yes to approve the lease, two for no to not approve the lease. And the motion carries 179 to 37. And gee, that seems so fast, now that we're down to 10 seconds. Article Number Eleven, Fourth of July Appropriation. Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to fund the town of Duxbury's Fourth of July Parade and Ceremonies to be expended under the direction of the Town Manager. Finance Committee voted eight-zero to recommend.
Any questions, concerns, or further discussion on the appropriation for the Fourth of July Parade? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote at this time. One for yes, two for And the motion carries 188 to 15. We're up to Article Number Twelve, which is the amendment...a zoning amendment bylaw for Medical Marijuana Overlay District. Before we start on that, I just want to make a couple of comments about the warrant that was distributed early on. There are a couple of things that I need to draw your attention to, because they were what is euphemistically called Scribner's Errors and Minor Changes. If you look at the top of Page 31, it talks...it starts with the medical...the marijuana overlay district is established as an overlay district within the town of Duxbury. And then, there's a brackets, "Location to be established through the public hearing process." That should have been stricken. That, in fact, happened. And what you see are the locations that's in the article itself. The other thing I want to point out is, as the article goes on, you see some maps. Those maps show where the overlay districts would be. One of the early versions of this... One of the early versions of this warrant had more articles, and it was originally going to be Article Number Fourteen. When it was renumbered, it became Article Number Twelve. However, the map says, "map to accompany Article Fourteen." Ignore the fourteen. This is the correct map for this article. And the map, and the, and the information on the map itself clearly refers to the right place. That having been said, I believe we have a report from the planning board. Mr. Wadsworth.
Should I read the, our motion first?
Please.
Article Twelve, amend zoning bylaw, medical marijuana overlay district. I move that the town vote to amend its zoning bylaw by adding a new section six-twenty as printed in the warrant, and that the town vote to amend its zoning maps by adding the medical marijuana overlay district maps as printed in the warrant to the zoning maps on file with the town clerk as amended to date, and by adding this district to Article Two Hundred, Establishment of Districts, Section Two-O-One, Classes of Districts, and by reference in Section Two-O-Two Point One, Zoning Maps of the Zoning Bylaw. Finance Committee voted eight-zero to recommend.
Second.
Motion seconded. Mr. Wadsworth, we have a report of the planning board.
George Wadsworth, Clerk pro temp of the planning board. The report is, "After a public hearing held on December twelfth and continued to January thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, and closed on that date, the planning board voted six-oh to support the article as amended with respect to the map and the thousand-foot buffer as shown in the warrant."
Thank you. Valerie Masard, our town planner, will be making a presentation on this article itself.
Ashke's very excited. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Oh, okay, that, that will start there. Just to be clear, the medical marijuana treatment centers that we're talking about today deal only with medically prescribed marijuana. So, just, we're not talking about home use, we're not talking about home delivery, we're not talking about what's not medically prescribed or sometimes called recreational marijuana. We banned recreational marijuana at last year's town meeting, and that has not changed. So, we're only talking about medical marijuana. So, the next question is, why are we talking about medical marijuana? Right now, Duxbury doesn't have any local regulations, and that's why we're here today. We have... We're, we're under state law, and we had, originally had a moratorium which expired in two thousand and fourteen. And state regulations will allow medical marijuana to locate anywhere within the town so long as it's five hundred feet from where children congregate, such as a school. And that means that it could be just about anywhere except around a school. And that's why we want to talk about this with town meeting today. This is the actual wording in the state law, five hundred feet from where children congregate. That doesn't mean an ice cream parlor. It does mean a school. It does mean a playground where there's organized activities. So, we are looking carefully at where are those buffers to make sure that we are thinking through where we're headed in terms of talking about this article. And I just want to also clarify that a medical marijuana treatment center, as defined by state law, includes all of the activities around that. It means that if you're growing it, selling it, making, making, manufacturing products, administering it, and so forth, all of that is encapsulated in the simple definition of a medical marijuana treatment center. When we're looking at it from a town perspective, we aren't able to define one thing or another. It's simply defined as a medical marijuana treatment facility under state regulations. So, we're, we're coming to you today and saying that we want to empower the town by looking at adopting a local zoning bylaw. There's some benefits to that as a community. Would allow us to locate perhaps better than anywhere in the town. It will allow us to establish the types of permits, such as saying upfront, you'll need to get a special permit, which allows in a butter to have standing and to be notified. We can define buffers. So, the state says five hundred feet, we can look at other options, and we're allowed to define hours of operation. There's a regulatory agency called the Cannabis Control Commission which oversees this, and that agency would actually be the ones that regulate a facility as they do now throughout the state. If there were issues related to how the activity is running, they would be the ones that would step in and intercede with the regulations. Local bylaws are subject to Attorney General review, and we know that the Attorney General has taken a position with all of the other communities who have attempted a ban, that they have overturned that. So, we had talked about a little bit early on whether or not a ban would be something that we would look at, but we know that that would be overturned, and so we are staying with the proposed zoning at the local level. And some folks may be familiar with the term host agreement. I just want to make clear that the host agreement is a part of the process of the regulations over a medical marijuana treatment facility. However, it's separate from zoning, and it would only come up in the instance that someone actually chose to locate a facility here. They would come to the selectmen and they would ask for permission and look for a host agreement. In that host agreement today, if someone were to arrive, is where we would ask for the ability to negotiate the types of permits that might be required. We can opt to not support, or we can opt to not, well, there's different language in there, but if we don't support a particular site, we need to have good reason for that, and the appeal process for that would be through the courts. It would not be through zoning. So, the next question, what are we proposing? I'll go to the next slide. We're proposing an overlay district. An overlay district is similar to some of the other districts we already have, like the Wetlands Protection Overlay District. It means that the zoning underneath stays in place and doesn't change at all, but there's an overlay on top of that that is going to situate over there if this use were to arrive. This would come into play. And this would, as, as written here, would be, the host agreement would be required with the application, meaning that, meeting with the selectmen in advance and hashing out those details before a special permit application would be required. A special permit application through the planning board requires a supermajority or four out of seven. We would then put in place through the special permit process a butter notification at standing, and we've looked at a thousand-foot buffer rather than five hundred feet. Town council's advising that above and beyond one thousand feet is not something that would probably stand the test of the Attorney General. So, next slide, please. The planning board has struggled a little bit trying to figure out where would we put it. We are forty-seven percent land use, that's residential. Less than five percent of the town is neighborhood commercial, and even less than five percent is neighborhood business two, which is where we've settled because that's where we have the most intensive uses in town. We have no zoning that is not next to residential. So, through the course of the public hearing process, the neighborhood business two district appeared to be the most suitable location, and that's what's being recommended to you. Next slide, please. If you can look behind me, you'll see that there are some stars. Those locate some of the schools. They don't locate all of the facilities where children congregate, but it is to give a sense to town meeting of where those are in relationship to the NB-two zoning districts. So, what you see in red and black behind me is where those NB-two districts are. There are very few. I think there are six, and they are located throughout town. We've tried to make them familiar to you by naming them in terms of the businesses that are located there or the nickname of the business district to help you, and I'll walk you through that. I just, with the next slide, wanted to also show you where the buffers are, roughly speaking. So, you can see the yellow, which is where these thousand-foot buffers would arrive around some of the existing schools and uses in town. You'll also note that there's a yellow arrow on the slide, and that's pointing to a park that's owned by the town across the corner from Bennett's. So, you can see that if you look to the left on that map, you'll see Fred's Fix-It and Osborn's, generally speaking. There are two lots there. The third lot is owned by the Conservation Commission. And then you'll also see to the north Cox's Corner, where there is one property that appears to be outside of any buffers that we know of. Next slide, please. This is a list of the different parcels, and I just want to walk you through briefly each of the districts more zoomed in. Next slide, please. This is Snug Harbor. You can see where the NB-two zoning is, and I've pointed out where Duxbury Maritime School is, and you can see that that's relatively close to the NB-two district. There are also some churches in the area. So, we, at this time, would see that a buffer would probably make this a less likely place for one of these to locate. Next slide, please. I got a super-duper laser. Okay. This is Railroad Avenue, and the schools are here. And what we're looking at here is a buffer zone from the schools. You have to use, say, the tennis courts and the driveway. You can't use the wooded or grassed areas to measure. And then up here is a dance studio. So, those are two things that now might interfere with the ability to locate here. I, I must say that there is a for-sale sign or has been one near here, so that where my laser is now, whoop, roughly up in there, the back part of this lot and the driveway portion of Mr. Giuliano's development are the only places that appear to be eligible where that dance studio to not be there. Next slide, please. We're looking at Cox's Corner here. This is the NB-two zone, and that is commonly known as Millbrook Motors. There's no buffers that we know of immediately in this location. Next slide, please. This is Bennett's. This here is, is a locally owned, excuse me, town-owned park. And there are two lots here, and this is a typo in terms of the zoning maps. It's not part of the street. But, anyway, these two here, with the park here, I'm not sure how many facilities or how much use this gets by children, so it could count as something that may exclude that as a, as a buffer. Next slide, please. This is Fred's Fix-It, and this is Osborn's. And then this parcel here is owned by the Conservation Commission. This is a wetland area. Again, we don't see anything that I'm aware of today that would exclude this area. Next slide, please. Here we have Hall's Corner. There is a, the Girl Scout House has some regular activities. There's the convent here, and then there is also over here a dance studio. So, this is another one which may have some, some difficulty with buffers. Next slide, please. So, again, I've just walked you through each of these. That's where the Fred's Fix-It and Osborn's is, and that is where Cox's Corner is. That is Bennett's Corner, and again, there's a small park right there. The rest of them appear to be in areas that may interfere because of other uses around them that would be required buffers. So, the last slide. Again, that's without the buffers. And then I may have one more slide. Right, so, the planning board is recommending that we adopt overlay zoning so that we have some control over where these might locate, and more control as a community in terms of our local zoning powers when it comes to locating these facilities. Are any questions? I know Scott had some comments.
Scott Castergrundy, Chairman, Planning Board here in town. Just a couple of quick things before anybody might have any questions. I know it's come up a few times around town. People are asking some questions. You know, why not locate this where we might end up in a bog or in the ocean or someplace else or on town-owned land even? We've been advised by town council that that's not a feasible site where somebody could build one, i.e., would put ourselves at risk of the Attorney General overturning what we send in for a bylaw, which would then revert us back to what we have now, where it could be built anywhere in town as long as it's five hundred feet from where children congregate, which literally means it could be at your neighbor's house. So, in doing what we've laid out here, we have feasible locations, increasing the buffer from five hundred to a thousand feet, which has been approved in other towns by the Attorney General. Looking at fifteen hundred, two thousand feet, we've been advised that that's not a way to go because we put ourselves at risk of being overturned again at the Attorney General level. Putting it on our most restricted sites that we have seems to be the, the best way to do it. We continued the public hearing through, I think we had four regarding this, so we tried to take as much input as we could from everybody in the town. If we looked at it strictly a zoning district where we stuck at someplace residentially in the town and, you know, tried to do that, every place you think of, anyone here would be a neighbor of it somewhere and would obviously have a problem with it. So, I think what we have now is, is the best idea. Myself and a number of others would really like to go for a prohibition like we did with the recreational for our town based on how our business districts are so small and they're all surrounded by residences. But, this gives us the opportunity to put in place what I call a backstop. At a future town meeting, whether it's our very next town meeting or sometime in the future, we could take a shot at a prohibition and see if the Attorney General maybe has approved a few in some other towns, and we can get in with that group once these things get, start to get placed in maybe surrounding towns to where they can say, well, why have one in Duxbury? And then if we're, if that gets overturned by the Attorney General, we backstop onto what we have here. We don't go back to it can be anywhere. So, again, that's why we suggest at the planning board level that we go for the article as written. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think Duxbury Facts had some remarks as well.
Good afternoon. My name's Neil Dougherty from Pheasant Hill Lane, and I'm a member of Duxbury Facts. If you're not familiar with Duxbury Facts, we're a community coalition that supports and advocates for healthy lifestyles through the reduction of alcohol and drug abuse, and we also foster mental health wellness. Our steering committee includes hospital administrat, uh, school administrators, the Duxbury PD Crisis Intervention Team, parents, youth, religious community members, and community volunteers. Duxbury Facts supports Article Twelve that creates the medical marijuana overlay districts, and we urge you to vote yes on this important article. We first got involved with this issue when there was a potential of a medical marijuana growing facility being located on a site on Railroad Avenue. We were very concerned because the location was so close to library, the library, playgrounds, three schools where children gather. Under the existing state law, as already was stated, a medical marijuana facility could be at this location because it meets the five-hundred-foot buffer zone required by state law. In drafting the town meeting article, the planning board held a number of sessions that we attended. The board addressed the issue of distance from schools, playgrounds, and churches by increasing the five-hundred-foot buffer to a thousand feet. This increase in buffer zone affects a number of the commercially zoned lots to include most of the Railroad Avenue, Millbrook location. The thousand-foot buffer also affects the viability of Snug Harbor in the Hall's Corner NB-two zones. And as already was stated by Valerie and Scott, if this article doesn't pass with a two-thirds vote, we will revert to the state regulation with to allow a medical marijuana retail store, cultivator, distributor, warehouse, appropriation, operation anywhere in town. This includes lots one hundred feet from your property line regardless of where your neighborhood is located, and at five hundred feet from a school, playground... is located, and at 500 feet from a school, playground, library, church. So please vote yes on Article 12. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now open the, open this article to questions that people may have.
Ann Ward, Huckleberry Lane.
I'm going to take, we'll put Ann Ward on the bottom, and then we'll take you up on the top, sir.
Ann Ward, Huckleberry Lane. I support Article 12 also. I'm also a member of Ducksbury Facts and have attended the planning board's public hearings on this. I appreciate the work that the planning director and the planning board have put into this and the amount of time it's taken to look at the state regs and decide what best applies to Ducksbury. I do have one question, quick question. On page 32 of the warrant, Section 620.4, Location and Dimensional Controls, Paragraph 1C, the last 10 words of that section, I don't believe were in the original draft that we saw based on state regs, and I'm asking if the planning board added that phrase that reads "for particular purposes in a structured and scheduled manner," because in my experience, people don't go to the playground, or a public park, or a public beach to do scheduled and structured things. We go there for free time and recreation and leisure. So I'm wondering what the intent was, if that in fact was added by the planning board, and if that's the case, I would ask for an amendment and delete that phrase. If that comes straight out of the state regs, I understand that's a minimum standard and we have to include it. Thank you.
If you could just repeat where that's found again for people.
Sure. It's page 32.
Yep.
It's not on the yellow sheet that Mrs. Sullivan has been struggling with today.
That's a good thing.
Section 620.4, right up at the top, Location and Dimensional Controls. Number one, letter C, library, playground, public park, public beach, religious facility, youth center, or similar facility in which minors commonly congregate. And I believe the state law ended with the word "congregate," and we seem to have added a phrase "for particular purposes in a structured and scheduled manner." And I'm just wondering whether we did add that ourselves, or if that is based on the state regs.
Thank you.
If I may.
Please.
Valerie Massard, Planning Director. Through you, Mr. Moderator. There was discussion during the public hearings. This language has always been in place. There was discussion during one of the hearings as whether or not the portion that you're talking about should be stricken. When you look at the regulations rather than the law, these are actually the words directly out of the Cannabis Control Commission's regulations, and these are directed to us from Town Council. This is not something that we added. Rather, it's been there all along, and I think that the choice was to leave it there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen on the upper level to my left, and then the gentleman to my right on the upper level.
Hello. Thomas Knee, 590 Bay Road. I have a question for Ms. Massard and the planning board. If we have this 1,000-foot buffer, why did we bother to include the parcels at Snug Harbor and Millbrook?
So in response to that, the planning board held several public hearings and debated this at length, and the possibility of trying to select and say we would pick one over another, quickly we realized that that would turn into a situation where we would be having that debate on all of these locations. And it's, rather than try to choose one over another, or favor one area over another, the planning board chose that it should just select all of them, and the buffers do their job.
So all of NB2 is included?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen.
Terry Reiber, 1372 Tremont Street. Our house is 600 feet away from Cox's Corner, and we're very sad that that would be picked as a location. I know down in Plymouth, when they have a grow location, there's a 10-foot-high fence topped with razor wire, there's outdoor lighting, and there's 24/7 security people patrolling the site. So when we're talking to these locations here, we're not talking about a little place where a few people go in with a wheelchair, buy a handful of stuff, and walk away. We're talking about a full, plone production facility that honestly looks like a state penitentiary. And for us to have worked our entire lives to pay down a mortgage and probably see our property get $100,000 to $200,000 haircut the moment something like that is approved is very difficult to stomach. There's also a lot of other expensive million-dollar homes in that area. There's Duck Hill, and there's roads all up and down Tremont. And I believe that if these locations are, end up with these sort of facilities in them, we're going to see hundreds of homes lose property value, and we're going to hurt the tax base that pays for, you know, the schools and everything else that we do in this town. I notice Plymouth put their one grow facility in an industrial park. It backs on one side of industrial park, the other side is Route 3. It's very close to Pac TV. Out of the way, nobody cares, and nobody's home prices are being impacted. I would argue that rather than just taking this B2 and starting to stuff this stuff into people's faces, we create a new M1 zone, a marijuana zone, and I think a good place for it would be right between the police station and the transfer station. Maybe a road that goes back 200 feet. We sell some land off, or we lease it, and it's right by the police station, well monitored. Not a lot of homes in that area. We could really conceal it, and we could even specially tax it, and that money could go towards educating students to stay away from drugs, which I would definitely be in favor of having students staying away from drugs. So I would ask people, in fairness to the homeowners like ourselves, this is financial suicide for hundreds of people's homes. And I do believe there's places that we can find in Ducksbury that will keep the value of the homes up and not impact people. So I recommend people vote this down. If we need a special town meeting to do it, I don't care, but I think we should find an M1 zone that we can put it, keep it out of people's faces, and not watch people who've worked their entire lives to build a nest egg and watch a haircut happen, because these penitentiary-like facilities will be moved, will be literally within hundreds of feet of their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a comment?
So those comments are well-taken, and those are the same comments we heard during the public hearings as we approached this. And we did actually look at, could we locate it on town land? And the answer from Town Council is no. That would be overturned by the Attorney General. Our concern here, and the difficulty the planning board has had, is that, again, there is no location that isn't adjacent to a residence, and also without zoning, that could appear anywhere in town, that anyone's neighbor could choose to have a facility, and we would not be able to say that we don't want it in that location. This is the best opportunity out of a series of four public hearings, where the planning board was able to try to focus on the most intensive existing uses in the town, where we've already dedicated that land through zoning for those uses, and say that those perhaps are the only ones that are a suitable choice at this time.
Why can't we sell off some land, you know, right by the police station? I don't understand why the town couldn't sell land, or go out to Route 53 to do this and find something that's minimum impact. I just, and unfortunately for me, to see that, you know, nobody in Washington Street obviously wants a penitentiary-like facility on Washington Street, so those zones just conveniently have things around them that knock them out. And I only see two places on the whole map, and one just happens to be Cox's Corner, 500 feet from our house, that unconveniently has nothing to knock it out. So most of those zones are bogus. They'll probably never, they'll never have anything approved. There's only like two places and two properties on that map that's being selected. It seemed arbitrary that only two properties in the whole town have any chance of having these penitentiary-like facilities created, and one just happens to be 500 feet from our home. I'm sorry, but I'm hoping people will vote this down and realize we could have another special town meeting, we could come up with more intelligent zoning that isn't going to hurt the price of people's homes, and get the penitentiary set up out of people's sight. I believe we can work harder on this, and if we don't do it right, it's going to affect property values, it's going to destroy property values for some people, and it's going to reduce the tax revenue of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing nobody approaching a microphone or at a microphone, I'm going to call.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Could I ask you to go to a microphone so that they can be heard? And I really don't mean to ignore anybody, so if you're desperate to make a comment and I don't recognize you, please just shout out, and we'll get to you.
Hi. I'm Joanne Duffy, 43 Chestnut Street. And I'm wondering, do we have any choice at all in this? Are we required to have a marijuana-growing facility?
I think our town planner has a response for you.
We are only obligated to have a medical marijuana treatment facility so long as there isn't one in the county, which there is.
Oh, there is one in the county.
If, however, someone chose to come to Ducksbury today without the zoning, they could locate anywhere in town, as long as they're 500 feet. We are trying to say that we want to control where it could locate. We are not obligating ourselves to ever having a medical marijuana treatment center here in Ducksbury by the zoning bylaw change today. We're simply saying where it would go through a special permit process and through a host agreement process first, if it were to even be proposed in the town. That we're not saying that it would come here, but state law right now would allow it to go anywhere, as long as it's not within 500 feet of where children congregate.
But you have said that because there's one in Plymouth, we wouldn't be required as of now.
Well, the state law dictates that there has to be one in the county.
Okay.
Attorney General, however, if someone came today and filed with us.
We know people want to.
Anywhere in town, and said that they'd like to grow, perhaps in large, build a large facility as described, we would have to entertain that, no matter where it were located, as long as it wasn't within 500 feet of where children congregate.
Okay. Thank you.
Gentlemen at upper right.
Ted Lawson, 620 Washington Street. I also represent the Maritime School as the executive director. I just, a point of clarification, as I understand it and I read it, these buffer zones are virtually impossible, as they're, as they currently lie, for one of these treatment centers to be built. But Valerie used the term "less likely" when she was presenting, and I just, I'm looking for some clarification. Is it less likely, or is it virtually, or highly unlikely, I suppose?
It's impossible to be located within 1,000 feet of one of those uses. When I say unlikely means that if a dance studio shut down, that buffer would go away, and the zoning would remain. However, there are several uses, as we noted, around some of these locations that don't appear to have any chance of changing their location. So while there's a buffer, it's impossible.
Thank you.
So I'd like to reiterate one more comment. If we do not go forward with this article, and then feasibly get the town to decide to sell off or rezonate a piece of town property and sell it off to try to do it, that's going to take a significant amount of time. And if we don't do this article, not only will Cox's Corner be an available spot and/or, it'll be everywhere in town. So not doing anything at all opens up the entire town, as long, and that would even, it would revert us back to the 500-foot buffer, which would then also open up Railroad Ave and everything else. So again, what we're trying to do here from the planning board's standpoint is, we would have preferred to go with a complete prohibition, but we know that has been overturned already by the Attorney General's office in other locations. So that's not really a feasible option for us. Putting this in place gives us that backstop, that at our very next town meeting, whether that's a, we got to wait till next spring, or it's a fall town meeting, from the planning board's standpoint, we'll take a shot at it. We'll take a shot at the prohibition, and if we get it through, maybe some other towns will have by then, that will refer back to that. But in doing nothing on everything in between, we really put ourselves at risk. And again, it opens up Railroad Ave again, it opens up all, everywhere in town, including, even if you think about Cox's Corner being the possibility now, not just within 500 feet of it, your neighbor can do it. Anybody's property could be purchased, and then one of these built on it. So we knew, no matter where we find in town, every one of our neighborhood business districts is surrounded by residences. And unfortunately, everywhere we look in town, this is our situation. We're not Plymouth, we don't have an industrial park. We're not Kingston that has industrial parks. We just don't have that opportunity. But the state requires us do something, or we're everywhere. So I again encourage everybody to please support the article.
Mr. Reiber, I'm going to ask you, if you hold your comment, do we have somebody down at the bottom who has not spoken before?
Sure.
Mike Giuliano, 216 Crescent Street. I have a question for the planning director or planning board chair with regards to the issue that the gentleman brought up near Cox's Corner. Could a second article be brought at another meeting if there was a town, piece of land that got sold in a better designation to add another warrant for locating it on a specific site?
Absolutely. We can always entertain changes to this over time. The impetus being that we, because recreational marijuana has come to Massachusetts, I can tell you that we get calls on a regular basis from the marijuana industry, and they are scanning and looking for locations throughout the state, and they are keeping a close eye on zoning. And so we're trying to have something in place to protect the town as best we can, and we can certainly take time to continue to look at this as time moves on. We do hope that the town would support this article for now, and we're certainly open to continuing to look at other options.
Thank you. So it sounds like there's an incredible amount of due diligence that went into drafting this, and this is our best first step to protect ourselves, and then at a later date, we could avoid the specific situations that may occur.
Yes, absolutely.
Great. Thanks so much.
Again, I'm going to recognize the woman on the lower level, she having not spoken before on this article.
Thank you. Joanne Kingsley, Lake Shore Drive. I have a couple of questions. Is bus stops considered a place where children congregate? I did not hear that mentioned.
Town council is saying no. It's defined by the regulations at the Cannabis Control Commission. It's not where they happen to arrive, but it has to be normal, regular, scheduled activities, such as lessons, or regular outdoor baseball games, or something along those lines. Ice cream parlor is an example that's specifically spelled out as not something, and a house where a child lives is also not a buffer for the, as far as the state is concerned.
The second question I had is, in the towns that I've driven through in Western Mass where they do have these dispensaries, they have a heavy police presence. They have to have somebody on duty controlling the traffic, which is astronomical, controlling the lines. It's like right in the center of town, in the western part of the state. My question is, is that not going to be something where we're going to put a burden on the finances of the police department as well?
So again, we're only looking at the possibility of where it could locate if it arrived, and to further protect the town, we're saying that it would have to be a special permit and a host agreement. And through those two processes, it would enable us to require that they provide us with all the information that there might be related to the use, such as traffic, such as any kind of security. We do know that it's not a cash-based business in Massachusetts anymore. However, the description of the way these are closed off and sheltered so that you don't know what's inside is accurate. And we've already said it's not something we desire to have, it's not something that we have anyone actively pursuing, but we just want to put our best foot forward in terms of protecting the town.
Okay. My concern is, like, and Plymouth's had a couple of problems with theirs, with a public health problem, so they've had to close some of theirs. So if Plymouth was to have to close any of theirs, then we would become more vulnerable.
Well, luckily for us, if you want to look at it from that perspective, our neighboring towns, in several cases, have voted in favor of both recreational and medical. This is only medical. So the amount of traffic, I think, would be much less than what is being experienced at these recreational facilities, which are experiencing heavy traffic.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reiber, we finally get to you.
Okay. I'm hearing assurances that future town meetings, something might be done to ameliorate that, but that doesn't really ameliorate my concern. I think if we really put our minds to it, we could. I think if we really put our minds to it, we could create a marijuana zoning. I would recommend between the transfer station, the police station, in a deep cul-de-sac. We do the zoning first, and then we worry about separating off an acre or two, or whatever, quarter acre, whatever's needed. And I know that people that would invest in these businesses are not going to invest in uncertainty, so if they see a certain process going in place, and they know it's going beside the police station, they'll wait and they'll put their dibs in. So I really think we should do the right thing and work with haste to at least get the zoning to make sure it's not going to chop property values and worry about the separation of land after. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are we ready for a vote now? I see nobody else. So I'm going to call for a vote on Article number 12. It takes a two-thirds votes of zoning bylaw, and we'll take a two-thirds vote to pass. The red light is on. If you're in favor of the article, press 1. If you're opposed, press 2. Voting is closed, and the article carries 237, 255. We're up to Article 13 now, the Duxbury seawall repairs. If you're not aware of this, we will be dealing with this as a divided motion. That is to say, there will be two separate motions being made that will be later explained to you as we go along. Each one will stand alone. We could pass one and not the other, we can pass both, you could pass neither, but you will be asked to vote on two different occasions, on two different motions in Article 13. If you think back to Article 6, which was the budget article, the same sort of thing. You've got some choices, and you can say yes to some and no to others. Mrs. Sullivan.
Duxbury seawall repairs. I move that the town vote to borrow the sum of $4,977,000 to design, construct, reconstruct, maintain, repair, replace, and support the Duxbury Beach seawall and any and all other costs incidental or related thereto. And to meet said appropriation, authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow such sum pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Sections 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes therefore and further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with general law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs and further to repay said borrowing. The town shall use only, excuse me, I want to get this right, the town shall only use federal, state, and local grants and assess betterments on all eligible properties except the town shall pay for the costs, if any, of the bonding of the project as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance committee voted to support, 7-0. I'll be speaking to this for finance, if you would like to hear.
That would be fine. We'll hear from the finance committee now, and I believe there is somebody from the seawall committee that will be here to speak. And when the finance committee gets done making their presentation, I'll recognize them.
Okay. Good afternoon. I think out of all the articles that we're facing in this town meeting, this is certainly the one that has gotten the most notice from the town, as the issue that brings it to you today started last year on this day, I believe, was the storm on the 9th, and has continued to be a focus of interest since that time. As you all know, at that point, there were some serious nor'easters that came in, and there was damage done to the existing seawall that borders the Gurnett area. We made some emergency repairs and started to face the daunting task of trying to get funding to help us do repairs, to make plans for the future, to work with the neighborhood to see what exactly those plans would entail and what the town could support. After an amazing amount of hours of discussion, the seawall committee has devoted their life to this over the last year. Mr. Reed has spent an enormous amount of time, along with other members at Town Hall, Mr. Budkus, it goes on and on, to try to determine what we can do, that we can support as a community, and try to preserve this seawall in this area. It's not a simple solution. There have been several solutions that we could have. We could, and please don't take these in any order of anybody liking them, and as I've said to the seawall committee, when you look at me and hear what I'm saying, I'm talking finance, I'm not an engineer, I'm merely discussing the problem and what we can do within the means that we have to rectify. So the first solution would be do nothing. The second solution would be to repair the wall to what it had been before the event. The third would be to repair the wall with mitigation, which would mean that you would repair the wall and improve it somewhat. The fourth would be to repair and improve the wall. These proposals have all been vetted, and we, in obviously wanting to get FEMA reimbursement, which was available to us since we had been declared a disaster, we went to FEMA and tried to understand their process. Any of you that have dealt with working with this organization, although they do a lot of good, it is not for the faint of heart. We have determined, after many, many conversations, that our best opportunity for reimbursement within a reasonable period of time, which would mean that you would try to get the wall started in this construction season, would be to repair the wall. On top of that, we have a great deal, this has been approved by FEMA. That is the only thing that has been approved by FEMA, is that we can repair the wall to what it was before, with certain enhancements that make sense today versus when it was built back in the 50s. The second would be the mitigation, and there will be slides, and many people will discuss this with a lot more competence than I will. But if you will, the footprint of the wall is what the driving factor is. We cannot increase the footprint, because if we increase the footprint, it becomes an improvement, not a repair. We can maintain the footprint, but we can also add what is called sheeting. So if you think of the wall sitting there, if you add a steel plate, which is called sheeting, and I believe it's 12 feet, she found 12 feet, you can put that through the bottom of where you're going to repair it to stabilize the wall. It just makes sense. If you've got it, instead of just sitting on top or just being buried slightly with this particular anchor in the ground, it's going to give that wall some more stability. That is something that has not been approved, but we have heard from FEMA, and it is being fast-tracked for that approval, and we feel very confident that that will take place. Even if it didn't, even if it didn't, the price tag on that sheeting is about $300,000, and it makes all sorts of sense to take this wall and stabilize it in this fashion. On top of that, we had gone and we had asked engineers to come and give us estimates of what this would cost. We hired an engineering firm, they went out, they did research, they drew plans, they gave us some estimates of what it would cost. Their estimates were much, much lower than the number that FEMA approved. FEMA approved a number, and the exact number, I don't have in front of me, but was like 4.6 million. Our estimate with our engineer was under 3 million. So FEMA includes escalators, they include all sorts of national add-ons, so that they can give us a number that we will not exceed. We are not going to spend any more than what the bid comes in on. On top of that, we have been lucky enough that the state has given us a million-dollar grant. By that, we don't have to pay it back, there's no interest. As far as the FEMA, it is a grant as well, we do not have to pay it back. This million-dollar grant is in place to backfill the 25% that FEMA does not cover. Based on those numbers, we feel that repairing the wall, even with the sheeting, will have a negligible impact to the community. And the motion is such, that if indeed the price of this project exceeds what we have as available grants from FEMA, plus the grant from the state for a million dollars, that anything above and beyond that number will have betterments assigned to the neighborhood. So the taxpayer will be looking at the bonding, which John Q. can speak with about the potential costs, and in order to mitigate that, we are also working with the state with a program where, as we get bills in, and that we have to pay, because we will not get reimbursed from FEMA until the project is completed, the state has a program where they can help us by paying in an interim fashion those bills, so that the town does not run up a big debt. So after all of this, I think that it's one of those situations where it's going to be difficult to make everyone happy, but this motion will address the repair of those 800 feet, it will address stabilizing that section of the wall, so that we will be hopeful that this will keep it steady and will give us a useful life. But we have all acknowledged in this conversation that Mother Nature will win. This is not the last conversation. We need to be looking at grants, we need to keep this dialogue going, because we are only fixing the wall and repairing it, and are absolutely clear that there will be another storm, there will be the conversation again on perhaps another section of the wall, and that we are trying very hard to come up with a protocol for this section that we can use to move forward. And I know there'll be many questions, and there are many people here that are much more capable than I to address, but from a money point of view, we're approved by FEMA for 75% of the repair, we have a million-dollar grant, anything above and beyond that will be assigned betterments to the neighborhood, the costs that we are looking at that will be borne by the town will be on the bonding. The main reason for that is that we cannot assign betterments until the project is completed, and we have a finite number. I hope that is as clear as mud, I know, but I hope that helps. Thank you.
We'll now hear from Ms. Babcock, who is Chair of the Seawall Committee. And I would mention, even though I had such a great experience pointing out the yellow information, outside on the table is a blue piece of paper, it has the high points of what Mrs. Sullivan has just talked about, and on the back, it has some information about the borrowing. So if you didn't already pick that up, you can pick it up on the way out.
My name's Alicia Babcock, and I'm here to present to you Article 13. We'll be voting on this with two separate motions today.
Yes.
The first is to replace, the first is to replace 850 feet of failed seawall. And I'm excited to tell you, reiterate what Betsy just said, that after a very long year of working to find a resolution to this, we are not only going to be able to fix the broken wall, but it will get paid for through a FEMA reimbursement and a million-dollar state grant. And we want to be sure that we take advantage of these two funding vehicles in the window that they're available to us, because otherwise we'll lose this wonderful opportunity to fund the project at no cost to the Duxbury taxpayers. The second motion is to build a revetment, which would protect the base of the existing wall and stretch along the entire 3,500 linear feet. This part would be funded by the residents in the Gurnett Road community in the form of a betterment, so again, no tax implications to the taxpayer. So I just want to take a minute to recall one of the biggest storms ever to hit our area, because it's the reason we need Article 13. It was about a year ago last week that we were hit with Winter Storm Riley, and this event broke, displaced, and completely washed away huge 50-foot sections of seawall, and left the town in a situation nobody was prepared for. We had a collision of events people fear at the coast, a powerful nor'easter, or in this case, a bomb cyclone, a full moon and high tide. Only it wasn't just one high tide cycle, it was 11 of them. Riley sat over us for days, and the water built up and created this extreme storm surge. The seawall withstood a lot of abuse, but due to its age and a second combination of unusual events, the wall was pushed to its limit. This photo was taken right before the end of the storm, and you can see obvious damage to the wall here and along the footing. There was significant erosion at the footing, and because the sand was dragged away there, nothing was supporting the wall on the seaward side. So when the next tide came in, which was the 11th tide, the water went over the wall and receded through the gap at the bottom, and it pulled with it more sand until it became so unstable that it toppled over. And this action is called undermining. And with the proposed plan, you'll see in a few minutes, we'll be able to do a very good job at avoiding this from happening again. The areas that you see here in front of Cable Hill and Ocean Road North, Cable Hill had a complete failure and lost 35 feet of property in under three hours. Fortunately, these homes sit a little further back than the others, so there was little time to react, and drop emergency boulders into the hole to help stop the damage from occurring. But these homes were dangerously close to falling into the ocean. If a total failure had happened in front of this house at Ocean Road North, this house would be gone. The homes here are only 20 feet from the seawall, so having 35 feet of erosion would have washed this one away. There would have been no two- or three-hour response time here. So some of you might be saying, "Well, that's not my problem." But I assure you, it's all of our problem, because what happens is, with every house that we lose, we lose the tax revenue that goes along with it. And the community represents $2 million in taxes to all of us. The town would need to make up this loss somehow, and that burden would eventually get distributed amongst everyone here. So we want to put it back together, fix these failures as soon as possible, and then stabilize it with a revetment to prevent this from happening again. Now if you go back to the old town reports in the late '30s and '40s, you'll see that there was a lot of discussion about building a seawall in response to the hurricane of 1938. Town officials were very concerned that another storm like that could cause a breach in the Gurnett Road area. They were afraid of this happening because they knew the bay was too shallow to handle the flow of water, the flow of ocean water, and the impact that it would have on the town. So in 1954, the town decided to construct a seawall as insurance that this wouldn't happen. But unfortunately, seawalls have a life expectancy of- But unfortunately, seawalls have a life expectancy of about 50 years, so ours at 65-plus has been operating on borrowed time. A conditions report study done in 2011 showed the wall was in critical condition. And in 2012, a recommendation for replacement was made with a warning that to do nothing would result in catastrophic failure. And since nothing was done, it's really no surprise that the seawall started to crumble in 2018. It was just at the end of its useful life. Here's a great overhead shot of the Barrier Beach. It starts at the town line on Gurnett Road, which is a little further back from here. And it stretches all the way down to the other side of the Duxbury Beach Reservation, which is all the way down, down here, which is about seven miles. And its job is to be just that, a barrier, to protect everything that lies behind it. On top of it sits a community of homes that have been there for generations and a single road which passes through the area and acts as the lifeline to the whole peninsula. Without it, the whole system breaks down. Area residents need to access their homes. The town needs it for emergency vehicles and utilities. And the reservation needs it to truck in materials. This winter alone, over 2,000 trucks traveled down Gurnett Road carrying 76,000 tons of sand for a multimillion-dollar sacrificial dune project at the crossover. If we don't protect this road, none of that can happen. The only other way to get there is over the Powder Point Bridge, and that has a weight limit that won't allow for trucks. If the reservation can't replenish the sand out there, over time, they will also experience a failure, which would be detrimental to the town. So they take the beach very, protecting the beach very seriously, as do the people in the Gurnett Road area. In fact, if you go to the reservation website, it will tell you that, quote, "There's a lot more than water behind Duxbury Beach. There are homes, businesses, roadways, waterfront infrastructure, boating anchorages, tidal flats that support a vital fishing industry, and a 2,000-acre salt marsh and home to much wildlife." The only difference between the two sections is one side has houses on it and the other has open space, but we have the same objective, and that is to protect this strip of land. The Gurnett roadside just has to do it with the seawall because of the restrictions. So now that we've seen the bird's eye view of the Barrier Beach, we can hone in a little closer, closer onto Gurnett Road itself and look at how narrow and vulnerable it is to breaching, similar to the areas being built up out at the reservation. This photo was taken during an uneventful full-moon tide, so you can see how close the two bodies of water are. Keeping the failure at Cable Hill in mind and remembering how quickly a large amount of soil was lost, we need to be mindful that without the protection of a seawall, this road becomes at risk when we have a big storm like Riley. And as we just discussed, access is extremely important to the success of the whole system. Losing this road could start a ripple effect that would be hard to recover from. So we want to keep as much water off this road as possible, as it's already susceptible to flooding, which makes it difficult for vehicles to pass. There are also utilities and sewer lines that lie beneath this road, and if they get disrupted, we'd run the risk of contaminating the bay. In addition to the environmental impacts this would have, life in Duxbury is largely centered around the bay, so it would have impact in that respect as well. So we've talked about seawall failure a lot this year, but I'd like to take a minute to show you the seawall at work, doing what it's meant to do. Without it, we have, we, without it, we've had a taste of the destructive power that the water is capable of. And because of that, I think it's given us a new appreciation for its protective value. Without this piece of infrastructure, we would have an enormous public safety issue. The seawall as a line of defense in this area was the system put in place by the town almost 70 years ago, and it would have continued to protect the area had it not been at the end of its useful life. So the town has developed this proposed replacement plan. First, we replace the 800 feet with something built to today's standards. This is a cross-section of what Amory Engineering has designed for us. This is a wall that uses high-quality concrete and rebar for strength and has a steel sheet attached to the footing and is driven deep into the ground for stability and to prevent undermining, which is right here. We don't currently have this. And it also has weed poles for drainage, located here and at the base, to eliminate that pulling. Part two of the plan, which will be voted on in the second motion, is to build a revetment. These are interlocking boulders set at the base, set at the base of the wall on the seaward side, an example of which you can see here. We would run this down the entire length of the wall and feel it's critical to stabilizing the current situation as it'll offer support to the older sections. It will also pass in front of the new section for an, for extra strength, extra insurance. The goal here is to prevent any future failures from happening and prevent any loss of life. And so the beauty of this whole thing is that we'll, we'll all reap the benefits from the project and financially, it won't cost a thing. So now in summary, just want to talk about the cost of inaction. First of all, if we do nothing, we'll lose all the funding. It's not available to us indefinitely. And if we don't take the grant money the state has so generously given us, it would be unlikely that we get awarded anything the next time around. They'll just give it to another one of our South Shore neighbors in the same situation. Secondly, more sections of the wall will come down and cause a bigger disaster, more flooding, more loss of property, and the potential to compromise Gurnett Road. Emergency vehicles lose access, homes in the community, homes in the community that collectively generate $2 million in tax revenue would be in jeopardy, and we generally put the Barrier Beach at risk of not being able to do its job. So the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen have unanimously voted in favor of supporting Article 13. So the town is fully behind this project. They understand what the ramifications are if we don't take care of this as soon as possible, and I really hope you do too. Help us protect this precious natural resource that we all love so future generations may enjoy it as well. It makes this town such a special place to live. Thank you for your time, and I encourage you to vote yes on Article 13. Thank you.
Excuse me. Article 13, Motion One, is now open for discussion. Anybody wishes to be heard? Woman in the back on my left on the lower level.
Were there any climate scientists on, on this seawall committee?
Were there any biases on the seawall committee?
Climate scientists.
Climate scientists?
Yes. There weren't? There were no climate scientists on the seawall committee? You mean?
I'm sorry, I'm not laughing at you. I just feel a little silly. Do we have an answer?
No, there are not. We have nine committee members and five of them are engineers.
What kind of engineers? My husband was an engineer. I know the difference between engineers.
They are structural engineers.
If, if I lived in one of the 20 or so houses out there, I probably would want the rest of Duxbury to build a barrier wall for me, and it might last for my lifetime. I, I think it's not, taking money from the state to build this doesn't, it seems irresponsible to me because it's like throwing the money in the ocean. The ocean is going to win. Global warming is going to happen. It might not be a storm. It might just be gradual increase in the size of the ocean. The barrier reefs have come and gone over the centuries. You know, we don't control nature. If you really love the ocean, you love it in all of its aspects. If it's a big storm and it's the ocean, you are, you admire it, you love it. And I'm sorry if your house is, you know, maybe you should put it up on stilts.
My house is on stilts.
Huh?
My house is on stilts.
Okay, good. Your house is on stilts. So and all of your neighbors' houses can be on stilts. I don't think it'll last, but, you know.
So I'm guessing you're not in favor of the article then? I'm going to recognize the woman in the right-hand corner up here, and then I'll, Mr. Martini on the left-hand side. And then the gentleman in the upper corner. Please.
Joanna Kingsley Lake Shore Drive. I just have a couple of questions. I know after that last meeting we had, a couple of weeks later, some more expenses came out on repairing the road in Marshfield so the trucks could get by. I see all these little expenses coming in. How is that affecting our taxes as far as the town paying for that? Because that wasn't part of the FEMA or the state grant, I don't believe.
Do we have an answer? Ms. Babcock, can I ask you to step away from the microphone, please? Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Reed.
Thank you. The question to which you're referring had to do with the bridge project in Marshfield. We used Chapter 90 funding for that, so it didn't impact our tax rate.
Okay, but this, with what we're doing now, could there be some things that come up after the fact, like the police station that wasn't totally designed correctly? Could this stuff come back afterwards with side effects after FEMA money's used and the grant money used, and then the town become more responsible? Is that possible?
Well, the possibility always exists. In fact, if I may, Mary Beth, could you put the slide up of the funding so we can better understand that? I'm not sure of the specific nature of your question. Forgive me.
I'm trying to get an idea of the added costs that seem to, seem to keep coming up on a lot of Duxbury projects, five, seven, 10 years down the road. A lot of us do not benefit from the beach. You want to go to the beach, you pay. You cannot see the ocean from the other side of 53. You have no services on the other side of 53. We don't have underground sewer. We don't have underground utility lines. So a lot of what you're asking us to do is a leap of faith to benefit the majority, the right, the, a certain area of town. The other area of town does not benefit from any of it, basically, except not have to pay higher taxes in the future. But you can't even guarantee that's not even going to happen. My point is you're asking people to put out a lot on, that aren't affected by this. I know it's going to pass because the majority of the people here are beach property owners because that was evident at the last meeting. It was flooded with that and it didn't matter what anybody had to say. But my question is, money had to be used. All of a sudden, it came up afterwards. Oh, this went on two weeks later. I think getting full disclosure of everything is better. I understand a lot of people working on the seawall committee are definitely, probably involved with their properties over there as well. I know in, in Situate, houses are on stilts and they're still on stilts. And that was the law for the water to go through so they didn't have to worry about taking the full front of it. It is possible. And I have people, I know people who own homes in Gurnett. The problem is, is when you build in an area like that, you are, you do know the risks of Mother Nature. The ocean has to be respected as any other part of Mother Nature does. Problem is, I just want to know how much of the impact is because for the, the majority of the situations is only a certain part of town ever gets affected by what you're trying to do over here. And I just want to know what happens for the rest.
Okay. Do you mind flipping to the next slide? Yeah, that looks right. That's the, that's the funding mechanism here. What I want, what I'd like to draw your attention to is it's not impacting our tax rate one bit. That's the whole point. In fact, what we're doing is we're using FEMA reimbursements, betterments, and state grants. The idea here was originally, we thought that this might have to go to a ballot question because we thought the need for an override might be necessary. Thankfully, John Adams came aboard and over the course of the last 12 months, we figured out a way to build the wall to the way it was the day before the storm hit. So it won't be five feet higher, it won't be eight feet thicker. It'll be 850 feet long of the repair that broke in the three primary sections. But we figured out a way to do it so that it wouldn't impact all of us, so that we don't have to hit the tax rate to do it. So what we're doing is we're doing the reimbursements strictly through the state and the feds. So that, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's the funding plan right behind me.
Because we're asking for money. So where is that money coming from that you're asking for? Because it is a money issue, my understanding.
Correct. It comes first through a borrowing that gets reimbursed based on the plan behind me.
But the money is coming from the town to, for a portion of it, correct?
No, 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 no. The, the idea is to have the betterment.
So why are we voting on it? Why is it a money issue if it's not?
Go ahead.
You're absolutely correct. We are looking for a, we will do a borrowing that will be up to that amount, but one of the things that the Finance Committee was adamant about and worked very carefully with the Selectmen and the town manager and the seawall committee was that we would have approvals from the folks FEMA and the state and would have one, that certainty that we would be getting reimbursed. So yes, there will be a temporary borrowing. We are going to be reimbursed by FEMA. I personally annoyed Rainey to the point where he hauled FEMA so that I could speak to him, God love him, and I could hear it myself because I wasn't going to stand here and look at you and you and you and say, "We're going to be reimbursed," unless I had had assurances myself from the FEMA representatives that that was indeed true. I have satisfied that that is indeed true. We have the million-dollar grant. That has already been approved. So, and we also have agreement from the Selectmen that any money above and beyond that is not covered through those mechanisms will be covered through betterments. We are being absolutely straightforward that there will be a cost to the town for the bonding. We are going to do everything in our power to keep that cost as low as possible because we are working with the state has a program where while we're waiting for the money from FEMA, they will give us interim payments and then they will collect the, the full amount at the end from FEMA. So we will be doing everything we can. So you're absolutely correct. There will be a cost. That cost will be minimal. And we have, we have just worked with all of these different groups to have their assurances, their approvals, so that we are not going to put the Duxbury taxpayer on the hook for something that we felt at town meeting would be a difficult thing to pass.
Thank you for the clarification because having been in 78 in another coastal town and the ocean came through my basement, I understand how FEMA works. So, and I also understand how people don't always follow through with the money and the homeowner ends up losing as well.
Which is why we waited for the approval before we came to town meeting.
Well, thank you for the clarification, but I knew it was a money issue involved and I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn, can I ask you to wait till, Mr. Martini's been, been very patiently standing up there.
Thank you. Andre Martini, 110 Heritage Lane. First of all, the woman who spoke here before me, the, the wall solution is not probably, from a long-term perspective, the best solution, but the best solution would be a massive beach nourishment project. But we can't do that. That's not a feasible opportunity at this time. So the wall is the best solution that we have today to fix this. We have properties that are taxpayer properties that if we do lose them, that will affect our taxpayers. The town has property, the road, and that will be a cost to us if that gets damaged in any way. So I think it's important that we do do the project. The way it's funded right now, it looks like we will certainly, if there is any exposure to the town, it will be very, very minimal. This is, the grant opportunities, the kind of forward funding that we're proposing here is absolutely the way we do this for all kinds of grants. Most grants are reimbursement-type grants. You have to expend some money first, then you get repaid. So the long-term case, what the town will owe is, is minimal if nothing. I do have one question, though. I do have one question, though, in terms of the betterments. It's, it's kind of vague. It says that we shall assess betterments on all property benefited by the project. How do we define that? Because, you know, that, that can be, you can interpret that in a lot of ways. Is there a definition of how we're proposing the definition of that?
Our Town Manager, Mr. Reed, will respond.
At present, we're using the assessor's maps, doing the, the 12th District up in that area.
But, but is, so, for example, is it properties on both sides of the road?
At present, it is. That may change, but the betterments, we, we had originally decided to go 300 feet back from the wall. But in speaking with folks at the Seawall Advisory Committee meetings, we had heard that back in the '50s that they assessed both sides of the road, plus a little bit more. We're looking back at the records from '54 when they first built the wall. We're gonna try and mirror that experience, and that may involve the entire 12th District up there.
Okay.
It, it does remain to be determined, though.
Okay. I'm gonna put my other hat on. I'm a trustee of the Duxbury Beach Reservation also. So, the, the, I, I'm questioning, for instance, would the reservation be included in that betterment? Because I'm not sure that, you know, we, we don't really benefit, I think, from the, from the wall directly, so that's why.
No.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna take Mr. Selectman Flynn first, then gentleman up in the upper-left-hand corner, and gentleman up in the right-hand corner. Mr. Flynn.
Just a couple of, just a couple of points of clarification. There's 191 families that live out on, in that area, and they're the ones who've stepped up to the plate on the betterments. The betterment for the revetment, which would cover the entire Seawall, the stone down front, the interlocking stone, is not reimbursable by the gov, federal government or the state. And the people in that neighborhood have stepped up to the plate to cover those betterments. So, I would urge you that it doesn't, it's not costing us taxpayer dollars. It is costing the folks out on, on the beach that. Also, just another point of clarification, suggestion was made that houses should be up on stilts, which many are, and probably many more will be. But the fact of the matter is, you still need the wall there because if there's no wall, the sand under the houses will wash away, and guess what? The houses will fall off the stilts. So, I would urge you to support this.
Thank you. Gentleman in the upper-left-hand, my left.
Thomas Nie, 590 Bay Road. I have two concerns about this project. Number one, a Seawall is not necessarily the best way to manage a beach. It increases the net rate of erosion. So, by itself, I do not think a Seawall is the answer. And I agree with the fellow who spoke before me, that a beach nourishment program should be part of a, a multi-part attack on this problem. Now, I, I would like to see the homes and the road protected, but I, I cannot vote in good conscience on this, or I can't vote in favor of this. A Seawall by itself is not the answer. If you look 50, 50 years down the road, it might actually make the problem worse, not just in front of those houses, but further, as, as further downstream as the sand flows along the beach. My second concern is that, are we as a town now taking ownership of all 3,000 feet of that Seawall by initiating this project?
I would just like to speak to the point that you made about the Seawall.
Mrs. Babcock, can I, can I ask you to wait for a second? We're gonna answer the gentleman's question first. Does, does somebody have an answer for his question about ownership of the wall?
Oh, I didn't hear that.
That's my favorite question about Seawalls. Who owns it? Been asked that about 1,000 times in the last year. We went back over the records and tried to determine who owned it. I went so far as sending the state a letter, to which they kindly replied. Dear Town Manager Reed, I write on behalf of the Department of Conservation and Recreation regarding your letter of June 27th to the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance regarding certain Seawalls constructed by the former Department of Public Works, the State DPW, a predecessor, a predecessor agency to the Department of Environmental Management, and to the Department pursuant to Chapter 531 of the Acts of 1952. We apologize for the time it has taken us to review and respond to your letter. By the way, I had sent that letter, you know, I got my response in November. I sent it in June. Your letter included correspondence written in 1992 from the former Director of DEM's Office of Waterways, in which he stated that DEM owned the structure. And I thought, oh, this is wonderful. Then I read, although we are aware that that position had at one time been presented to DE, by DEM Waterway staff, we do not agree that DEM or the Department owned or owns the Seawalls. We have consistently taken this position, including when a similar issue arose the last decade in another community. That community was Marshfield. Our position is based on the fact that the Act directed the former State DPW only to construct the Seawalls as part of a one-time project, but did not create any continuing obligation on the part of the Commonwealth to maintain and repair the Seawalls. Furthermore, we have no record of the Commonwealth having acquired any easements in these properties, and consider the Seawalls to be solely part of the, excuse me, solely part of the fee interest of the owners of record. As the Seawalls at issue are not owned by the Commonwealth and are not under the Department's control of jurisdiction, pursuant to the Mass General Law, we cannot make any expenditure for their maintenance. In discussions with counsel, and he could expand upon this as well, the ownership of the Seawalls, while somewhat unclear, at least at the state level and the town level, the town has maintained these Seawalls for at least the last 20 to 25 years, whether it be installing crack ceiling or doing revetment, small revetment work here and there. So, the ownership of the Seawalls, they pretty much rest upon the town's shoulders, as we see it. And this is part of that process to get them fixed.
I just wanted to answer the part about the Seawall. You said that it wasn't, maybe not the, the best choice. But, I do want to reassure you that we have just been very, very consumed this year with just trying to focus on the broken sections because it's very dangerous down there currently. It's open and exposed, and I don't even want to say this out loud right now because the winter's not totally over, but (laugh) we, we've been, we've been really lucky that we had the winter that we did so far. It's not normally like that. So, our primary focus this year was to figure out a way to plug up those holes and just replace those sections that are crumbling and broken and missing. This is not a total Seawall replacement that we're asking for at this time. It's just to replace those broken pieces. And I do want to reassure you that the Seawall Committee and everyone up here, you know, we understand that this, this job is not done once, once these pieces hopefully get replaced. There are grant opportunities out there for beach nourishment. You know, there are other things that we intend to explore in conjunction with this. But right now, our primary focus is to replace what's missing so that we don't experience further loss. If, if a storm should come through at the magnitude of last year, in the current situation, we would be in a, in a very, very terrible, terrible position. More of the wall would fall over. As I explained in my presentation, a lot of those homes sit very close to the wall. There's not a lot of response time. We, we really, we're in a very risky situation if we leave it the way that it is. So, we're really pleased with what we have going on right now. We've got a, a great plan. It's being funded. It's, it's really a gift, and I, I really would hate to see us not be able to take advantage of that. Thank you.
Did you have an additional question?
Not a question, just, I would like to urge the Selectmen to, with all your, with all your powers, if you could please look into beach nourishment, dredging barges, whatever it takes, because a Seawall by itself is not gonna fix this at all.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna, gentleman up in the upper-right-hand corner's been patiently waiting, and I'll take Mr. Dowling. And if we still have people, a woman down here in the bottom-left-hand corner, and the right-hand corner, I think was the order I, I saw people queue up at.
Jim Sullivan, Carriage Lane. The statements were made earlier that, well, let me back. This article is precedent-setting in many ways. The Seawall is truly 3,000 feet. We're dealing with one small portion of that wall today. What we do today sets the precedent for where we're going with this. And evidentially and historically, Seawalls have been a failed concept. It is not the remedy for the problem that exists. The ever-increasing seas and storms will continue. And if historically it has not been the solution, why will it be the solution in the future? To continue the same action and expect different results is illogical. And the statement was made earlier that this proposal will not cost the taxpayers of Duxbury As we all know, FEMA and state assets and tax revenue comes out of your pocket. It is not free money. So, in fact, taxpayers will be funding it. Again, the scope of this article is precedent-setting. It is merely the tip of the iceberg that we know is melting fast. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dowling. Selectman Dowling.
To address the couple of previous speakers, I, I look at this, and the Board of Selectmen looked at this as an emergency situation. We don't have time to come up with a design, or have anybody come up with a design, and say, "What's the best thing you can possibly do? How long will that take?" Meanwhile, years will go by before that happens. So, this is a, you know, we're, we're doing a Band-Aid approach, fixing what needs to be fixed, the way we can do it, and there's nobody besides the Board of Selectmen that has any appetite for making it cost the taxpayers anything. It was a great thing that everybody in that area has fully understood that the cost over and above any amounts of money that come from FEMA, grants, whatever, will all be done in betterments. Now, it is true that there's a small amount of money in interest. I, I can't remember what the number was, but it maybe, it's under 200,000, under 200,000 dollars, $100,000, sorry. And, but that's the only thing that would affect, and that would be under the levy limit. So, there's no debt exclusion override in this. It's, we looked at it as, you can't do nothing. Because guess what? If the same thing happens two weeks from now, we're gonna be out there doing something because the town of Duxbury can't stand there and do nothing in that situation, and which is what happened last year when the storm came. So, I think it's, this is the best you can possibly do with the least amount of cost to the taxpayer. And the people that benefit the most by this are, in fact, paying that cost.
Thank you. A woman down here to my left, then we'll take the woman on the right, and I have a gentleman up in the upper-left-hand corner.
Thank you.
Sheila Spellman, Screenhouse Lane, Duxbury. I just wanted to first of all thank everybody for all their efforts on behalf of this project. Article 13 is very important to the town. I don't believe anyone really gathers the importance of it to the taxpayers that are down there, the $2 million in lost revenue, the water and sewer lines that run under Greenwich Road that could be impacted into the habitat that's on the other side, into the marsh, into the bay. In one of the slides that they just showed, it showed 35 feet were gone in two hours. That barrier beach isn't that wide. If that was to happen again and there be a large breach, it would almost be as if it was an island. The emergency vehicles couldn't get down to the beach that we all enjoy, not just those homes, but down at the reservation and the public park and the drive-on. They can't get down there. To re-nourish the Duxbury Beach Reservation, they haul the trucks down through that area. And that area has to be maintained in order to have that access. The town gains a lot of revenue from, you know, selling stickers and whatnot, and if they can't replenish it, then there wouldn't be any access. The other important piece is that these grants that are available right now are because we had a catastrophic winter storm, Riley, that decimated that area. That's why the FEMA funds are available. The Town Manager, the Town Selectmen, different, the Seawall Committee, Concerned Residents, all worked diligently to get that dam and Seawall grant. Many towns have been getting those grants for years. We just joined that group, and we were able to get the, one of the largest awards this year because we were so significantly impaired. I think that it's, like this Selectman said, it may not be the perfect solution right now, but it's what we have, and it's practically being given to us on a platter to get this done. And I think it's of utmost importance to do it this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The woman to my right.
Sheila Lynch Bentonan, another Sheila, in support of this article. I think Duxbury, over the next 50 years, is going to have issues of water breaching important at our town meeting, and that we are going to have to be like Holland if we want to save Duxbury. If you don't pass this today and you open the town to a breach, it'll be like Chatham where eventually it breached, Monomoy became an island, the waterfront properties were hit. So, imagine Washington Street as Atlantic waterfront property. If Duxbury doesn't come to the defense of, never mind houses on Seawalls or the tax base of the people. I live miles from the beach, but I see the importance of stopping future openings to the beach. And we are going to have to think as a town how we're gonna protect over what the next 50 years is predicted to be like. And this is one tiny step, and we're getting a free ride. And not to vote for this would be not in the interests of our town. And I suggest the Selectmen form a committee to look at future breaches because they're coming. And if you don't want Duxbury to be Atlantic waterfront property, we have to address this. I support the article. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm starting to think that maybe we've, we've heard all the views, and people's positions have somewhat hardened. And while I will take this gentleman up here in the left-hand corner, he's been waiting patiently, I'm wondering if we aren't easing up on time for a vote.
Thank you. David Amory, Piererton Road. In the interest of this proposal, I look at Duxbury Beach. At one end, we see the extraordinary construction restoration of the sacrificial dune, which I think was enhanced by the expertise brought on board Woods Hole Oceanographic, or please correct me if I don't have that correct, but there are experts who've been involved in the design and construction of that sacrificial dune. Also understanding that six structural engineers were involved with the design or design for the repair for the new Seawall. We certainly know structural engineers are important to have for that. But has a, a beach expert like, somebody like Woods Hole been consulted to see that this is, in fact, the, the best way to do the wall now, even if this wall is only a limited lifespan? But I think it would be certainly worthwhile to get the expertise of people who are experts in dealing with beaches and erosion, in addition to the other structural engineering.
It appears our, our town planner has stepped up. I, I'm assuming she has an answer for you.
So, the Woods Hole Group is being contacted now by staff to look at grant funding this year to examine that exact question.
Thank you. Thank you. And they'll be weighing in on the design of the repairs?
No, they will be weighing in on all of the alternatives available to us on that beach. The beach, the wall, and how they relate to each other as far as nourishment, wave attenuation devices and otherwise. And we are jointly working with Marshfield on this possible application. We've met with CZM twice already.
Thank you. Are, are we ready for a vote?
No.
One question.
I, I, apparently we, at this point in time, I guess I will, this woman up here? This person up here on the left, I'm sorry.
Yes, just one quick question.
Second.
Do we have something other than a telephone conversation to commit FEMA to this 75%?
I am so glad you asked me that. Made this email worthwhile. In fact, here's what I did. Wednesday, knowing where we'd all be here on Saturday, I emailed FEMA and MEMA, and I wrote the following. "Good afternoon, I'm following up on our recent conversations related to Duxbury's request for mitigation funding on our seawall repair project. As I've mentioned previously, our annual town meeting is this coming Saturday, March 9, during which we will be asking the voters to approve funding for the seawall repair project. This is our singular chance at asking this question of them unless we hold another town meeting, the cost of which is prohibitive. That said, I asked Nancy O'Connor in our office to take a look at the status of our project in the FEMA portal, and we saw that there were comments that were made on March 5. And the comments were offered by a Mr. Fuller, who was confirming that the installation of our proposed mitigation, which is the sheet piling, is both technically feasible and cost-effective, which is encouraging. However, a more specific answer is now needed. I'm wondering if there's anything that can be more definitive so that I can tell the voters the mitigation portion of the proposed project has been approved or will be approved by FEMA, and if you can share with me the current status of this aspect of the application. If ever there was a time when a definitive answer is needed, this is it." I think they got the point, because then they wrote back, and they gave me an answer I didn't like, but I'll share it with you anyways. "Good afternoon, Rainey. As you are aware, a series of reviews need to be satisfied prior to project approval. To date, our project has undergone the initial review outlining the base scope of work and the cost estimate to put the facility back to its pre-disaster condition and is currently in mitigation review, and will require an environmental review and state and town review sign-off prior to approval. As the FEMA mitigation team continues to review all mitigation opportunities and fine-tune the eligible mitigation costs, they must also ensure that the mitigation measure is cost-effective, technically, feasibly, and ensure compliance with the environmental historic laws, regulations, and executive orders. Due to the complexity of this project, the review time may be longer than most basic projects, which makes it difficult to give you a definitive approved amount before your meeting. Please note that FEMA and MEMA are mindful of your situation and are working as expeditiously but carefully to finalize all reviews." We're close. We're really close. But that's as close as I got. That's, that's with regard to the mitigation, which is the sheet piling. Thank you, Betsy. With regard to the wall, we got the thumbs up on that probably three, four weeks ago. That's when I dragged Betsy in, because I wanted her to hear it for herself. I said, "I want you to listen to these people and listen to what they say." And we do have the wall, we're just waiting for the sheet piling.
So, yes, it is approved.
Is legal counsel comfortable with that response?
Jeff just gave me a finger, which was thumbs up, so that's a good sign.
So, I think that's your answer. Ms. Morris?
Hello, yeah.
Whoa.
Hello. Holly Morris, Abrams Hill Road. A couple of questions or clarification on the betterments. What is the term for the betterments? What happens if an owner defaults? And third, has anyone addressed the payments on the bond? The bond payment and incorporating that into the betterments as well?
I actually saw John Adams smile at that. I think he's got an answer.
I thought I would get away without having to say anything on this matter. It's important to note, the, through the betterments, that $1,463,568, the town would have to borrow that in advance, a long-term debt, probably 20 years. The betterments would be paying back the principal and interest on that bond over those 20 years. That's how the betterment works. So, there's, in this case, since it's 100% through betterments, there's a one-to-one ratio between what the property owners are paying down in that neighborhood versus what we're paying on the bond.
And what if they default?
Betterments are connected to a lien process. So, if the homeowners do not pay the betterments, they're subject to a tax lien, just as if they don't pay their property taxes.
Okay, thank you.
Are we ready for a vote now? Yes. Okay, I'm going to call for a vote at this point.
Good boy.
I think, I think this has been... I think we already had a question?
No. No, I haven't.
All right.
Larry Delay, East Pine Road. I'll make this brief. There's been some misinformation. The seawall was not built to protect homes. There were only a handful of homes there when it was built. And discussions about a seawall not being where we should go. The seawall exists. It's not the 1950s. We're not asking for a new seawall that extends beyond the existing one. Just as coal may not have made sense today, it made sense 50 years ago. So, any discussions about the wall isn't the solution. The wall exists. This offer between everyone here isn't costing anyone now. Any other discussions are for other days. This is about what needs to be done today at no cost to the people. And as a resident there, we've stepped it up, and I hope that the town will do the same. Thank you.
Okay. I believe everybody's pretty clear on what we're voting on, and I don't think we need to re, re... Do we need to reread the motion again? No. Okay. When that light turns green, if you're in favor of this, press 1 for yes, press 2 for no. It will take a 2/3 vote to pass. Voting is now open. Voting is closed. The motion passes 285 to 38. I love that enthusiasm, but I remind you, the work isn't done. We have one more motion on this article. Now, I don't know how long we're going to stay here tonight, but it's my sincere hope we're at least going to finish this other motion on this article. Mrs. Sullivan, may we have a second motion on Article 13?
I move that the town vote to borrow the sum of $1,236,125 to design, construct, reconstruct, maintain, repair, replace, and support the Duxbury Beach revetment and any and all other costs incidental or related thereto. And to meet said appropriation, authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow such sum pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes therefore. And further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs. And further, to repay for said borrowing, the town shall use only federal, state, and local grants and assess betterments on all eligible properties except the town shall pay for the costs, if any, of the bonding of the project as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Mrs. Sullivan, do you wish to speak to it?
Just briefly. This is, was separated from the original motion, because this, this part of the repair, we have determined is not going to be eligible for any repayment through FEMA, MEMA, or any other state or federal agency. If we go forward with this, that the expense would be borne by the residents of that area, and we need to have it permitted. There is, the permitting is not in place. So, therefore, we ask for your support, knowing that we will not be issuing this bond until we are fully permitted to go forward with this project. Simple. Oh, great, not so simple.
We'll now open this to discussion. Ms. Morris?
Thank you. Holly Morris, Abrams Hill Road. Again, my question about why the expense on the bonding was not incorporated into the betterments?
The, in order to issue the betterment, we have to have a completed project, and the bonding will take place before that, and we want to be able to pay for it. We also don't know if, when we do the bonds, if there'll be a premium. So, the expense might be mitigated by that as well. But it just seemed cleaner for us to be able to, to work it that way and to bear that expense and control the bonding through that move. So, we were content to let that be.
I'm just curious.
And the cost would be quite de minimis. So, it would, it would did not, it was not going to be something that we would keep the bond in place because of. Or the bond would be covered by the, by paying for the, principal and interest would be paid through betterments.
I'm just curious, Betsy, was this advised by, say, bond counsel or something to do it this way?
Well, all of this is going through bond counsel. It was a way, whether it was the only way, I, I can't speak to it, but it was the way that, that we had, we, the chairman, would be the way to go.
And how much money do you anticipate?
More authority than me.
And the value?
Bond counsel did approve this as a method.
And the dollar amount to this, again, is going to be roughly?
Oops, sorry, I just dropped that. The dollar amount for this is $1,236,125. And that was based on the, our engineer and the engineering estimates for the, for the proposal.
And the town's cost roughly?
It will all depend on timing. If it all falls into place within the time we set our tax bills, nothing. But if there's like a year lapse, worst-case interest scenario, maybe 50 grand, plus or minus.
Okay, thank you, John.
Okay. Woman's impatiently waiting. My left, the second level.
Michelle Hatfield, St. George Street. Sorry, I'm short. I will support this revetment. I think the urgency for doing it this year as written will get my vote. But I'm concerned about precedent-setting and the future of storm impact and climate change on our whole community, that we're setting a precedent for the residents of this area to be shouldering the full burden of this improvement that's going to benefit our whole town and continue to protect important town investments, such as the new high school, which is located near a tidal waterway. And in the coming decades, I could see being vulnerable if we were to allow the beach to be breached. So, I'm just questioning the precedent being set of the betterment way to pay. Not that any of us want to, you know, increase tax burdens or rents around town, but it's a question of fairness. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? I am seeing no comments. And I'm, I think, I think the issue is pretty much what we've seen before. I think we understand what's before us, and so I'm going to call for a vote at this point in time. Same as last time, 1 for yes, 2 for no. It is a 2/3 vote. The light is green. I'm going to ask you to vote. Voting is closed, and as I, as I said before, this is a decisive group. Motion passes 275 to 29. I thank everybody for their patience, and as was pointed out before, this was an emotional article. And I think as a community, we should be proud of ourselves for the way we handled it and the civility that was, that was, that was expressed. So, thank you.
Okay. Ready to keep going? John, you going to keep going?
I'm going to ask if people are interested in doing one more. I'm going to ask people to exit. If you're planning on leaving, I'm going to ask you to exit the room rather quickly. And I need the people who are still here to decide if they're interested in dealing with one more article, at least. And the next article is Article 14, which is the funding of... Mr. Reed? Engineering and design work related to the public works facility. And I will point out that we have the engineer here today, and so they are available and ready to answer your questions. I'm hoping we can do this, but I leave this up to the, up to the... Are we okay with this? Say yes or no. Yes. All right. Yes, has it?
Okay.
As people are exiting, let's go ahead and start this. Mrs. Sullivan, let's have a motion under Article 14.
Funding of engineering and design work related to the proposed Department of Public Works facility. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $1,400,000 for the purpose of obtaining engineering and design services for a new Town of Duxbury Department of Public Works facility on parcel number 092-500-016, located at 878 Tremont Street. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager. And to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $310,800 from water fund retained earnings. And to authorize the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, to borrow the sum of $1,89,200 pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes therefore. And further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any premium applied to the payment of the costs of the issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such. And further, to authorize the town manager to accept any gifts or grants for such project, and said appropriation to be contingent upon approval by town voters of a ballot question at an election. Said ballot question to ask voters to allow the town to exempt from the provisions of Prop. 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to obtain engineering and design services for construction of a new Department of Public Works facility to be located 878 Tremont Street, also shown on assessor's map, parcel number 092-500-016.
Second.
Finance Committee voted 8-0 to recommend.
Before we move forward with this article, I, the engineer, Mr. Jeff Alberti from Weston and Sampson, is not a resident of the town of Duxbury. I'd like a motion for Mr. Alberti to address the, to address the town meeting.
So, moved.
Second.
I'll need a vote on that. It's a majority vote. We're going to open voting right now. If you're in favor of hearing from our engineer, please press 1. If you're opposed, press 2. Can we open voting, please? Hello? That's all right. It's getting late. Okay, voting is now open. Actually, I was thinking of doing that as a voice vote, just for old times' sake, but...
Would have been fun.
Would have, would have been fun. We're voting to allow Mr. Alberti, who's an engineer and a non-resident of town, to address town meeting. It's a pretty standard, it's a pretty standard motion, and it does pass 117 to 28. to twenty-eight. The other thing I just wanted to mention, the last part of the motion that Mrs. Sullivan read, talked about a Proposition Two-and-a-half exemption. For this to happen, two things will need, will have to happen. First, you will have to pass this at this town meeting. And second, at the election that's being held in two weeks, it will then have to pass a ballot vote as well. It will be a two-thirds vote at this, at this meeting today for this to go forward. And I hope that's clear and we can talk about it later. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Clarify who the engineer that is speaking. If we're, if this article is to hire an engineer to look at this site, I'm confused as to the engineer that is presenting these plans and where he plays into this.
Well, we will get you a very good explanation as Mr. Reed here or... I'm sorry, Mr. Lambisi, our procurement officer is coming forward.
Scott Lambisi, Director of Municipal Services. He was hired as part of the study and typically whenever we're looking at projects like this, we do designer selection to bring someone on to help us with the study. Once we get through the study, we bring it to the town to look whether they want to do the design.
So this is not necessarily the engineer that would be the recipient of the requested one-point-four-eight million dollars in this article?
Yes, the, the way that we wrote this plan, the, the contract and that, we can keep his engineering services on and we probably will.
Unusual, thank you.
No, actually, it's quite common. We've done, we do have that language in most of our design review requests.
Yeah, it's, we are have, I thought it was just me, thank you. Apparently, people had trouble with hearing you speak. Perhaps if you use this microphone down here, because I don't, I think people have been able to understand people on this microphone? Yes? Okay, yes. I need, I get, I'm going to, we have several people who said that it did not come through clearly. And the question, the question being, how was, how was this gentleman selected to be the designer and what will happens next?
So we, we put it out to bid. Whenever we begin a study, we go out to bid and we look for someone qualification-based to help us with the study. This gentleman's firm was the one that we selected. He was by far one of the better candidates. Within that document, we also put in there that if we decide that we want to continue on or we go on to the next phase, we can retain his services. So it is a common thing that we do. We don't, we always have the option of not doing it, but we are quite pleased with the services at this point.
Did you get that? Okay. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Jeff Alberti and I'm with Weston and Sampson. I'm a vice president with Weston and Sampson. Our firm's been involved in a hundred-and-twenty public works facilities in New England over the last twenty years. So that's some of the experience that we bring to this project and appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I know it's been a long day. I've been with you since nine AM as well, so I'll try to move through this expeditiously so that we can get to any questions you might have. Generally speaking, we're going to start off talking a little bit about the public works responsibilities, primarily because that is what affects and drives the size of this facility. I'll talk briefly about why the town needs a new facility. For anyone that was at the last town meeting, I had an opportunity to present and show a lot of pictures. I'll keep it brief on this one. We'll talk about what's proposed, what the costs are anticipated to be, and then we'll just close with some of the benefits. What does this facility do for not only the DPW, but for the community as a whole? So really, just starting with the public works responsibilities, there's a lot that we can talk about what public works does. And I think what's really, the one statement that's really resonated for what public works does for a community is shown here, and that is that the DPW touches the lives of the residents every day by maintaining the infrastructure that the community relies on. And if you begin to look at the different divisions, total of nine divisions within Department of Public Works, and you start thinking about the infrastructure they maintain, it's everything from the highways, a hundred-and-ten miles of road, the stormwater system throughout the community, the sidewalks, the lands and natural resource maintained, the municipal building grounds, athletic fields, park maintenance, water and sewer, there are twelve water sources, a hundred-and-thirty miles of water mains, the school wastewater system. So if you start thinking about what you use on a daily basis, public works is maintaining that, that infrastructure and a little bit out of sight, out of mind. And so I just wanted to refresh everyone's memory on those responsibilities and that this facility is supporting that operation that's going to continue to maintain those services. What's also important to note is that public works is a twenty-four-hour operation. And that's important because they're responding to the obvious snow and ice storms, the hurricane and windstorm cleanups, the flooding events. And in fact, American Public Works said it best with one of their articles, that public works are the first responders who are there until the emergency is over. And in fact, the federal government has actually come out and classified public works as a first responder. And this is important because a lot of what we do with programming these facilities is to ensure that they can respond quickly and efficiently to the needs of the community. So again, that's just a brief summary of the responsibilities. Moving on to why does the town need a new facility? It really can be summed up with some key points, first being the building is approaching fifty years of age, the responsibilities of public works have increased significantly over the years, but that facility really has not kept pace. It no longer serves the needs of the DPW and the town. This impacts employee safety throughout the facility as well as the efficiency of operations. The facilities do not meet current codes. In fact, there's been nine building code changes since this building was constructed. And the buildings really have exceeded their useful life. You can just see from the one photograph on the bottom, it's a tin shed essentially what's out there. If you begin to look a little bit closer, you can see on the right, you have a masonry unit on the exterior that's cracking, settling, breaking apart. You have damaged metal panels. And the photograph on the left shows you what insulation is left within that building, which is falling off the ceiling. Essentially, you're heating the outside when you heat the space. As you move inside, the space is not much better. You have inefficient and unsafe equipment storage. DPW has a multimillion-dollar fleet that the town has been funding over the years that services and maintains this infrastructure. They do the best that they can to store that indoors, but the, the facility's way undersized. As a result, it's just jam-packed in like sardines, making it inefficient and unsafe. As you look in the bottom left, this is a view of the vehicle maintenance bay where all the equipment in town is maintained. And it is quite undersized. In fact, if you look in the back of the bay, when you shut that door, there's just inches from the back of that vehicle. The employee support space, really not much better. This is a view of the locker area. It's actually out in the garage and you can see the front-end loader right next to it. And then this photograph, it was not staged. I came out to the site to grab some photographs for a presentation and I found the mechanics having to work on a vehicle outdoors in frigid cold temperatures because they had to raise that dump body and the building is not high enough to allow them to do that indoors. So you can imagine if it's snowing and it's raining, they have to maintain that equipment and get it out on the road for emergency purposes to maintain that infrastructure and they're doing that outdoors. Also, as I mentioned, it's a multimillion-dollar fleet that services this infrastructure. And one of the goals is to protect that equipment, but the facilities are undersized and as a result, a lot of that equipment is left outdoors. You can see on the left, some of the larger, very expensive, larger vehicles associated with the operation, all the way down to some of the smaller attachments that are shown on the right. Okay, so that sums up what DPW does for the community, showing you a brief description of, and some photographs of the deficiencies. So really, the next question is what is proposed? And so, again, using our experience, we've been involved in a lot of these, we know that it's important to meet with your staff, understand your operation, design this around your, your facility needs. So we did that early on. We went through an initial space needs assessment, came up with about forty-four thousand, four-hundred square feet. And we all recognize that space means money, so we spent some time working closely with DPW to see if we could reduce that. Went through our first revision, got that down to about thirty-nine thousand, seven-hundred square feet. Again, we took another stab at it. We were able to reduce it further, down to about thirty-eight thousand, two-hundred square feet. And that represented a fourteen percent reduction in the overall, in the overall program. So it was a great effort working closely with the staff to make sure we had a facility that'll meet your current and future needs, but we really wanted to find ways to fine-tune that so we could help to control costs. As far as the concept plan development, this again involved a very lengthy process with the committee and with the DPW. We started with the existing site that's shown here. You can see Tremont Street on the bottom right and Town Hall shown in yellow and the existing animal shelter. And you can see right in the middle is the existing DPW facility. It's just a bunch of old buildings scattered around the site. Through the process, we identified a proposed development area. And with this development area, we began developing concepts, trying to look for the most cost-effective and efficient concept for the site. And after a lengthy process, we identified a preferred concept that's shown here. It essentially includes a consolidated public works facility, a new salt storage structure. And then in the front of the site, there's an existing building that was in good shape that we felt could be repurposed and used for the harbor master to store some of their equipment, so we're maintaining that as part of this development. So taking that concept in, having that in mind, we went through the process of identifying anticipated costs. And so as you go through and you begin to look at the cost of these facilities, usually there's a lot of sticker shock and people want to understand, do they really cost that much? And so we felt that the best way to show you what these facilities cost is to show you what other communities are doing over the last five years. We've been fortunate that communities have been developing these facilities. They're all fifty, sixty years old, so many communities are developing them. So we have actual bid prices over the last five years. We project those costs out to 2020, when the anticipated construction would be. We come up with an average cost of about three-hundred-and-ninety dollars a square foot, and that's just for construction. So if we take that cost, use the thirty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-nine square feet, we apply that three-hundred-and-ninety dollars a square foot, again, based on actual bid prices for cost-effective facilities. These are pre-engineered metal buildings. These aren't very sophisticated and super elaborate buildings. They're really designed to just house the operation and make it safe and efficient. It's about a fifteen-million-dollar construction cost. Applied to that is usually an eighteen to twenty-three percent soft cost. And those soft costs are your professional fees, your furnishings, your communication systems. It really covers everything so that you were including all the costs within this. And that results in a total of somewhere in the range of seventeen-point-six to eighteen-point-three million. So we've given a range primarily because the facility hasn't been designed at this point and through that process of designing it, we'll actually be able to get a bid in hand and better address what the overall costs are as we move forward. What's also important to note is that the facility does have the water division, which operates through the enterprise fund, which can also fund a portion of this building. So approximately twenty-one-point-eight percent of the facility can be paid through the water enterprise fund. The remaining seventy-eight-point-two percent would be funded through the general fund. So just to give you a sense of future funding mechanism during construction. So that's a lot of information. We're talking about a facility in the eighteen-million-dollar range and a lot of people will say, well, how can a barn? And I heard that term earlier. And that's a great point. It is not a barn. It's an operations facility. It's housing a, you know, an operation that's maintaining your infrastructure and it has to be designed to, to today's codes, which are much more restrictive. As I mentioned, nine building code changes since your last facility was constructed. So how do I explain to you what goes into this building and that it's not just an eighteen million-dollar building? This is a breakdown showing you the different components. There are eleven main components that I've, I've extracted through this process. And without getting into the details of every one, I just wanted to focus in, on the building itself. So if you take this and you can see the highlighted area, that represents the building costs. And those building costs include the foundation, the superstructure, the enclosure, the interior finishes, and the mechanical electrical plumbing systems. It's about forty-two percent of the overall cost. And you can see what's left are items such as the site development. There's obviously a cost associated with developing a site to meet the Massachusetts DEP requirements. You have construction contingencies due to the early nature of this project. We're carrying both construction and design contingencies. We have soft costs associated with the professional fees. And then the cost of doing business, which is your contractor overhead, bonds and insurance. And then there's also some specialty components, a new salt storage structure, which is critical to public safety, and then the industrial equipment that goes along with the vehicle maintenance operations. So really, the takeaway is it's not an eighteen-million-dollar building. It's an eighteen-million-dollar total project cost that's estimated and the goal of the next phase is to design it and come up with additional cost-effective measures that can help to bring down the costs and hopefully get some good competitive bids when we come back to town meeting in the future. From a scheduling perspective, as was mentioned earlier, the process would be to move forward with Phase One, which would be to fund the one-point-four-million dollars to design and also get an owner's project manager on board, on board to assist, complete that design and obtain bids in about an eight-month period so that when we, we'd be able to come back to town meeting at the following March twenty-twenty town meeting with an actual bid in hand. That way, we can remove some of those contingencies that are currently being estimated and then ultimately move forward with construction of the facility, which is about an eighteen-month period, a fifteen-month period, I apologize. So just in closing, I mentioned earlier, I just wanted to close with some of the benefits. And I could spend a whole meeting talking about those benefits, but I just want to touch on what those are. They start with a code-compliant, safe work environment for town employees. I showed you some of those pictures. Those are not conditions that your town employees should be working on. They do a great job with what they have. I think they can do a lot better for the community with proper, basic facilities. It would protect the investment that you've all made in this multimillion-dollar fleet. Protecting that equipment, having it properly washed, having it properly stored, and having proper maintenance facilities will extend the life of that equipment. We've done study after study that demonstrates that and that'll save the town in the long run. Much more efficient workspaces for the staff allows them to respond more efficiently to your needs. It eliminates the need to invest in mandates. Essentially, if you do nothing, you'll have to start investing in that building. You'll get nothing for it because that building is not worth investing in. And it helps to replace a facility that is long past its useful life before it becomes a mandated emergency. We've seen some of these old buildings go up in flames because they don't have sprinkler systems or collapse because they weren't designed for today's snow loads. It's a lot more expensive if you have to replace a facility at that point. And just as a quick side note, on the cost of these facilities, based on construction escalation, you can expect somewhere in the nine-hundred-thousand dollars to a million-dollar escalation rate if you don't move forward this project for each year, and that will continue to grow as escalation in the construction market increases. So that's a summary of the overall project and I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Afternoon, everybody. Peter Buck is DPW Director. Like everybody else, when I heard the total, I had sticker shock also. So when they revived me, I started to think about all the projects that have, I've been involved with over the last twenty-five years in Duxbury. And I'll just list them real quickly. Duxbury Free Library, and by the way, all these projects, either the DPW was assisting with the projects or were major players in the projects. Duxbury Free Library, Wright Building Rehab, Percy Walker Pool Rehab, Police Station Headquarters, Central Fire Station, High School/Middle School Shared Project, New Cemetery Office Crematory and Maintenance Facility, Senior Center, Rehab of Old Town Hall, Rehab of Tarkland Community Center, and building the Animal Control Center. So basically, we've touched almost every building in town in the last twenty-five years, but we have not done anything with the DPW. As Jeff said, the, the costs will keep rising. We need to do something and we need to do something fairly soon. And I would appreciate any support that I could get for the project. Thank you.
We'll now open it up for, for questions.
John, Frank was going to speak.
Oh, I, I apologize. Frank Mangione from the Finance Committee is going to give the Finance Committee a view of this.
Okay, once again, I'd like to, sorry I can't get up to the podium, but the previous two speakers have pretty well outlined this. The pictures speak for a thousand words. We need to close the gap. This is the last major building in the town that will be refurbished and any of you people who have ever been down the DPW yard and got close and personal with some of these buildings will realize that it's been patched, it's been band-aided, we're working in very confined quarters. And although we look at the DPW facility mostly And although we look at the DPW facility mostly for equipment, I look more as a personnel because these are the people that come in in the middle of the night to take care of snowstorms. And these are the people that we want to not only have good facilities for them, but bring them all together. Right now, the water department works down in another building. Some management people are up in the town hall. And the object would be bring them together to get more efficiency out of the people as well as the vehicles. And so the committee felt that after the many years that we've talked about this, and some of us have been down there to see some of the conditions that the people have been working under and the conditions of the buildings, that the town will benefit, we think, in the long run from the efficiency of bringing people and equipment together under the proper facilities so that we can maximize their use and extend their life. And so we would have heard your vote. It was also supported by the Fiscal Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
Town election, too.
Mrs. McNabb.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm not for a second going to say that we don't need a new DPW. I think anybody who's been down there any time in the past can see that we definitely do. And who doesn't love Peter Buckus? So yes, let's, let's do this. But my question is about the $1.4 million that we're being asked to appropriate today for the engineering costs. And the engineering and design, I think, is what this article says. And that seemed, it was described as metal buildings. I think there is some slab or whatever foundation, but that does seem high to me. And I just wondered if we could compare that to some other design and engineering and exactly, you know, 1.4 million dollars is a lot. What is that getting us?
So the article is asking for, I think the key words would be up to 1.4 million. It isn't necessarily going to spend 1.4 million. And it would be to work with a, a committee to determine, you know, have we accomplished? Is this proposal what we need? Can we do with less? But I think we are at the juncture, and as you say, anybody that's been down there knows it's, it's going to fall over. So I would suggest that we, at a minimum, design, have a plan because this thing is, part of it did fall in on itself. The roof collapsed in one section a few years ago. And this building, building will become unusable and in the near future. And if we have to then accommodate emergency repairs in or an emergency build, it's not going to cost less. I'd rather be thoughtful. I'd rather get these plans nailed down. I'd rather have a committee work with what the design should be to protect the investment we have in these trucks and to protect the investment we have in these people. And, and to also, long-term, maybe if we were looking at this as a long range, we will definitely be freeing up space at Town Hall so that we're not looking for a request in future years because Town Hall is overcrowded. We'll have some room up there to accommodate. So I would ask you to please, please accept this, vote for this, and give us the ability to do some, some proper planning on a facility that we, that we all know is falling down and is, is well beyond its useful life. And we hope that you can support. And who doesn't love Peter Buckus? So there's that.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. I, in regards, just, just to kind of follow up.
Actually, I, I think our engineer or the engineer who's here right now has some comments in response to your question. So how about if we clear that up and then we move on to the next one?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to add that some of the services that would be provided as part of this would be design and bidding. That would be from the engineering perspective. Also, hiring an owner's project manager, which would be required by state law because of the size of this facility. And then the services that would be provided would be full bid documents in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 149, for all the file subbid categories. And there are 12 disciplines that would be involved in the design from survey, I'll list them quickly. Survey, geotech, permitting, civil site, cost estimating, architectural, structural, industrial equipment, HVAC, plumbing, fire protection, electrical. So each discipline will provide the required documents required by the state so that the project could be bid. It's going to be somewhere in the 140 to 150 sheets of drawings and about 2,000 to 3,000 pages of specifications. And again, that's all dictated by the state in order to do a public project of this type.
Thank you. You had another question, Mrs.?
I just was looking for that kind of information. Thank you. And just to say that it's up to 1.4 million and there, it could be less. And there is somebody overseeing that. You said a committee is going to be looking at that and I'm hoping somebody who's watching that fund and going to manage it.
Mr. Reed, do we have a committee that will be overseeing it?
Yes, we do.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Martikini has been patiently waiting and then there's a gentleman in, in the second level. Mr. Martikini.
Andre Martikini, 110 Heritage Lane. I am a structural engineer consultant, so I'm very familiar with the fee structures. For an $18 million project like this, I think, you know, doing the owner's project manager and the design part, portion of this for 1.4 million is very reasonable. I think when you, I know, Amy, you had mentioned that this is just a metal building, like a shed kind of building. Yes, you're right. The, the structure is not going to be a particularly complicated structure, but the services that are going to go into this structure are very complicated. Between ventilation requirements for all your trucks and things that are inside, for the, the pollution, for the drainage, you're having all the salt storage, water detention, there's going to be a lot of stuff that goes into this site. So it, although it sounds like a very simple little building, it's not that simple and I think the fees are very appropriate.
Thank you. Gentlemen, if you'd introduce yourself.
David Amory, Puritan Road. I'm an architect. I think the fees that's proposed, as Mr. Martikini has said, are very reasonable for the amount of work that's involved in putting a project together like that. I also thought the architect's presentation was excellent, very clear, and certainly appreciate that. This project was described, the transfer station is kind of filling the gap for projects that hadn't actually been completed yet in town over the last three decades. I wonder, though, there is some talk about other projects down the road, or might you shed a little bit of light on that? I know there's been some conversation about the transfer station. And then, of course, we have other projects on the line as well, like the, the bridge repairs. So keeping this project in the larger context of what's coming down the road, I just think we need to keep, stay aware of that. But as terms of the, the proposal, the monetary proposal on the, on the table now, I think is quite reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other, any other questions or comments? I'm seeing none, so we're gonna, I'm going to ask you to vote in just a minute. It takes a two-thirds vote. Again, I want to point out that if it, that, that if, if this passes tonight, you're going to need to vote on it again at the, at the town election in two weeks. So, voting is open. Say yes to move forward with this project, vote no to, to stop. It takes a two-thirds vote. Voting has closed. And this project, again, this is a decisive group. This project passes 131 to 22. I thank you very much. I feel like we've done a good day's work and I'm gonna, gonna suggest that somebody make a motion to recess this annual town meeting until Monday, March 11th at 7:00 PM at this place. And would you indulge me with a voice vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. And I remind everybody that turn your clocks ahead tonight. Oh, yes. Please, 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 on your way out, drop your, drop your little voting card on the way out, on the, on the, on the desk. Thank you.